Or aren't sure how to register. And whereas National Voter Registration Day is intended to bridge the gaps in knowledge and awareness, to ensure that all eligible Americans have a voice in the ongoing effort to build an America for all by leveraging technology and the reach of partners, volunteers, organizations, educate Americans about how to register, how to sign up for election reminders, learn about early voting options, request mail-in ballots, and more. Whereas the City of Carson strongly encourages all members of the community to participate in the democratic process and to utilize every resource to ensure that they're educated and up-to-date on the opportunities available to them. Every voice and every vote matters. Now therefore, the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Carson, California hereby proclaim September 19th as National Voter Registration Day and urges the community to observe the holiday by ensuring that they are accurately registered and committed to casting their ballot in upcoming elections. It's dated this 19th day of September 2023, and we are honored and congratulations to our City Clerk, Dr. Kalia Bradshaw.
Thank you. I think it's important, everything was said in the words that Councilwoman Rojas said, but just to reiterate, it's very important that you know your registration status. So if you've moved, or if anything in your personal information has changed, like your address, or your name, or your political affiliation, you do need to reregister. So you can check at lavote.gov, that's L-A-V-O-T-E.gov, and check your voter registration status. Today is just a day to remind people to check your status. We do have a very big election coming up next year, and we will have several vote centers in the City of Carson. So this is just a day that set aside as a civic holiday, as Councilwoman read, to check your status and to be prepared. You can continue to register to vote. Luckily, in California, we do allow voter registration very close up until all major elections, but it's always just a good day to have on the calendar to check your status and make sure that your voter registration is in line with where you live and your political affiliation, so that when it's time for the ballot to come out, you get the information that you need in time. So I'm glad that I work for a city that acknowledges Voter Registration Day, and I'm happy to serve as your City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and this is for you. Our next presentation is item number six, Certificate of Commendation to Good Samaritan, to the Good Samaritan Maurice Hardy. Maurice, come on down. Awesome, awesome, awesome. Mayor Pro Tim Hilton is going to read you this, but we are so honored to have you here this evening.
So they're going to play this little short video, so everybody knows why we're honoring him as a Good Samaritan, so check it out.
Yes, this is the hero himself, Maurice Hardy. Good morning to you.
Good morning.
We're so happy you're with us. We're going to talk to him in just a short second from here. We're actually in Hawthorne now, talking to him outside of his home, but before we do, we want to give you some background, so watch this. So this was the insane scene at Del Amo Fashion Center in Torrance, Sunday late afternoon. Multiple fights broke out amongst a large group of teenagers. Gunfire even rang out, though luckily, no one was hit. And in this now-viral video, you see a teen boy running for his life. That is 14-year-old Antonio Munoz. He is beaten by a crowd, repeatedly kicked. Munoz told us he was there with his brother to watch the movie Fast 10, when suddenly that brawl broke out. First, the attackers went for his brother, then for him. And what we're hearing about for the first time, and exclusively on Fox 11, is a story of heroism. Maurice, who you just heard from, stepped in to defend Munoz, and Munoz is speaking out about that.
They pulled my sweater, and they just dropped me to the ground. He started kicking me, kicking me in the leg, kicking me everywhere he could. It's a true hero right here.
So in the video, and we've highlighted Maurice, he's in the blue shirt, he steps in. And Maurice, what are you telling the kids at that point?
I was telling them, get back what y'all doing. Like, it was just, it's sickening to me that they were doing that, because it's like, where's your home training? What is your parents teaching you at home? Like, why you feel like that's okay? Like, if somebody was doing that to your brother, you wouldn't think that was okay? You'd be mad, so why do that to somebody else?
And you have two little brothers. That's what inspired you in part to step in.
Yes.
You met with Antonio yesterday. I think we're also showing video of your guys' reunion. What was that moment like?
It was real cool. Like, I was happy to see that he was okay. You know, he was really happy to see me. We hugged, talked a lot, you know. I'm going to look out for him and his brother, and the other gentleman who had got hurt. But it's really inspiring, because I always wanted to be a youth counselor. And with all this new fame, or I guess you could say, you know, I'm going to do that.
You were put in that situation for a reason, you believe. And we were talking, I loved talking to you this morning. You're really inspiring. You were talking about how you didn't grow up without a dad, and sometimes people use that as an excuse. And what's your message to people on that?
I mean, just because you don't have a father doesn't mean you don't know right from wrong. My mother, she always worked hard. She worked two jobs, so that's why me, I always go hard. Any job I ever had, I was always the first one there, the last one to leave, you know? So I have kids I mentor right now, so it's like, I wish I had the chance to meet with those kids beforehand and tell them, like, man, it's not cool, you know? For me, like, I never smoked, I never drank, I never did any drug in my life. And I tell people that, like, what are you, an athlete? You don't have to be an athlete, you know? It's just, I never let the peer pressure get to me, and, oh, if you don't do this, you're not cool, you know? I always done my own thing, and I've inspired a lot of people by doing my own thing.
How does the label of hero feel to you?
I mean, hero, I don't know. I just feel like, I mean, I say, I think anybody would do it, but it's not, everybody wouldn't do it, you know? I've been through a lot of things in my life, and it's showed me that I have the heart that a lot of people don't, and I wasn't scared when I went in there to save them.
You've left me speechless, really. Thank you so much. I just have to give you a hug. Appreciate you, appreciate people. Like, you restored my faith in humanity, and I think a lot of people feel that way when they hear your story and see what you did. So anything else you want to leave our viewers with?
Just be positive. Don't do what those kids did. If you see kids, you say something positive to them, give them encouraging words, you know, because people need smiles. And you could be that one that makes somebody smile and make their day.
Mic drop. I'll send it back to you with that.
Yeah, what else is there to say? Perfect.
So we want to present this certificate to Maurice Hardy. I reached out to him, I guess I had a soft spot, but when I saw that on TV, it kind of brought me to tears, because nobody jumps in anymore. Nobody stands up for people anymore. And my daughter was supposed to go to the movies that day, but somehow, some way, I didn't let her go, and I'm thankful. But if Uncle Maurice was there, it'd have been all right. So here's a certificate of commendation presented to Maurice Hardy in recognition of your selfless and act of heroism during the Del Amo Mall Brawl. Your courage and quick thinking is commendable. Wishing you success on all of your future endeavors for our city and the community. Signed this day, September 19, 2023, by our Mayor Lula Davis Holmes, our Councilmember Cedric Hicks, our Councilmember Jim Dear, Councilwoman Arlene Rojas, and yours truly, Mayor Pro Tim Jawan Hilton. Thank you for accepting our invitation to do this. And then we're going to have you take a picture, and we'll let you say something.
Maurice is a product of our church.
And that is, the name of the church is?
Imperial Heights Community Church of the Brethren. And we had a, what was it called? The Center, Peace and Justice Center. And the young men were tutored by our own Brother Anthony, who we recently lost. But he was a young man, good kid, always, he was a, he was a good child, growing up, always very positive, and we are just so proud of him. We are. We've been talking about him at church every Sunday since this happened. So again, from Imperial Heights, we are so proud of you. God bless you.
And that's our own Lillian Hobson, Carson Women's Club. She's volunteer extraordinaire is what I, let's just sum it up. But to Maurice, I just want to say, you know, that warmed my heart, because all too often we see people taking pictures, and they have their cameras out. That kid could have been killed, you know? And when I watch you go in, and no fear, God was with you. And you just move, move, you can't do that. That kid could have been killed. And it could have been my niece, nephew, or whatever. And I think people, I know it's, you're taking a risk, but you did it. And you didn't think about your own self. You just saw a kid that was being kicked and beat, and you went into action. And that warms my heart, because we don't see that anymore. We don't see that. And so I want to say from a grateful city, thank you. Let me have a hug too.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out. Appreciative of this reward. Like she said, grew up in Imperial Western, Imperial Heights Church, you know? And all the kids around there, I used to protect them, you know? Tried to get us to gang bang. I'd tell them, like, no, we not doing that, you know? So it always been on my heart to help others. And I've never been scared to help others, even if I knew something bad would happen to me, at least it happened to others, you know? And just thankful that I was there that day to help Antonio.
Well, again, everyone said everything, "Thank you," and the police departments are looking for you.
Well, I saw the video, and I saw what happened. I just felt that this young man took it upon himself to help another individual. And what you saw was an individual in distress, and you had no thought process in it except to help. And that is very rare in individuals today. Most people, as been stated before earlier, when they see something that's going on like that, first thing they do is pick up a camera and start taking a picture of it. They don't run to try to help, they just want to get the moment on social media that they got it first. But understanding what you did was outstanding, and always keep God first.
Yes, I want to say that along with the colleagues, we're very proud of you. We know that you're doing God's work on many levels, and I think that your future is very bright, because, you know, you don't just talk about doing right things, you actually act. And, you know, we always know that actions speak louder than words. You're a classic example of a Good Samaritan. America needs more people like you. Our society, our country would be that much better with you as a role model. Young people will now look up to you and say, look at, let's intervene, let's prevent someone from getting hurt. And you probably didn't know the young man when you first saw it, but you saw him being attacked, and you knew that was wrong, and so you stopped it. Thank God you did that, and we're proud of you, and we just think you're a great guy. All right. Good luck with everything.
Thank you so much. What's next? Who's that? Arizona, she's not here. The Captain's here?
Yes.
Come on down. We have something for you. Who is this? Who's the Captain? Salvation Army? Okay, that's, so do we have anyone from the Fire Department?
No one.
Not yet? Okay, we'll come back to that. No, I hadn't seen, I had not seen it.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, to all the council, Mayor Pro Tim, our City Manager's office, and to you, the residents, and everyone in the City of Carson. First of all, I would just like to, on behalf of Carson Sheriff's Station, congratulate Maurice. For you guys that don't know, there was a mutual aid request that day. Our Carson deputies, if you saw the video, that was our Carson deputies that went to help out Torrance PD with that situation. And so it was refreshing to see him, you know, to have the courage to step in, rather than, like you guys all said, take video like we've seen so many people. And I've already talked to Maurice, and we're going to let him know, hey, we have a job waiting for him with the Sheriff's Department.
That's great.
I figured you were back there doing that.
How to recruit.
I believe in partnering with the community.
So I'll share with you a few of the events that have taken place with the department, with the station since our last meeting. This week, we have a few things we will be participating in or involved in. We will be at the Phillips 66 Community Advisory Panel Meeting tomorrow morning, as well as the next two days will be at the Doubletree Reception. And myself and Lieutenant Aiello will be speaking at the City of Carson Human Relation Commission. We're looking forward to speaking to that, and just talking about some different things with our youth going on in our city. We will be involved in a tabletop disaster exercise or marathon. We think that's going to be very good. There's a lot of entities that are going to come in, so we can make sure that in case we ever have any type of emergency, we can respond appropriately to keep anyone from being harmed. Next week, along with Councilwoman Rojas, I will be meeting and my team with one of our local grocery owners. We're going to be talking with them on ways to harden their structure, just to help prevent thefts, and give them some ideas and some helpful tips. We will be having a coffee with the Captain on September 26. That's going to be at the Starbucks at Main and Sepulveda, and we're going to do it in the evening time from 4:30 to 6:30, so that we can allow those who do have to work or have other responsibilities to be able to come out and participate. We'll be doing some alert South Bay training to be ready for any type of natural disaster, and we will be having a community advisory meeting with some of our community members who care about not only the city, but some of our surrounding unincorporated county areas. As you all know, we lost our evidence and property custodian about a year ago, and so we're so excited. Next week, we're going to be dedicating our evidence and property custodian room, and we're going to rename it, and it's going to be named in her sake, and we're going to call it the Rosa L. Williams Evidence and Property Custodian Room. So we're looking forward to that, and very excited about that. As you know, we do have a substance problem that has continued to plague our world as a whole, and we just want you to know, our deputies continue to work hard and diligently to get rid of these illicit and dangerous drugs off the street. We had a bunch of warrants this year, this week, and we were able to get thousands of dollars of methamphetamine, as well as fentanyl, off the street this week. So we're happy about that, and we're also able to make two additional arrests. So we're going to continue to try to get those drugs from getting in the wrong hands and get them off the street. I want to thank you all, as well as those in the community who've reached out for their kind words and support. As we know, there was the tragic loss of the deputy up in, one of our sheriff's stations up in North County, and many of you all have reached out, either on a voice call, text, email, or whatever, just to offer your support. We've passed your condolences and support up to our deputies and partners up at Palmdale Station, and they're very, very thankful. I just want to reassure you that despite this tragedy, that the men and women at Carson Sheriff's Station are still dedicated, and they're going to do everything they can daily to keep you all safe. That's all I have from my report. Any questions, I'm me.
Thank you, Captain. Councilman Hicks, I know you. Did you have some comments?
Yes, I did, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to ask the Captain in regards to any notifications that we're having in our city. I know there have been some issues of certain crimes being committed. We're not getting notified as we used to get notified, so my concern would be, can we get that back in place? I know there were some issues that happened at the corner of Avalon and Del Amo at the Chevron Gas Station. I think there was a Mercedes that was taken by gunpoint, and there was a 13-year-old child possibly in the back of the car that had to get out the car real quickly. We never got a notification about that, but the residents know about it, and they put it on the ring, and they put it on everything else on social media, and then they're calling myself or maybe my colleagues. We have no record of it. So we're looking at, why you don't know, and we know. So that kind of thing, just that, I think that some of the things that we used to get notification from, we don't get anymore, so I just want to just put that back out there, that we need to start getting notified on different activities that's happening in our city.
No problem, sir.
Thank you. I still need someone to contact me about the incident that occurred.
Detective Gray is actually, I think she actually may have called once and left a message. Detective Gray is actually the person handling that matter.
She had my cell?
I don't know if I gave her your cell, but if you would like me to share your cell, I'll share your cell with her. Okay. Yes.
Home, cell, wannabe cell.
But yes, it'll be Detective Gray. I already know exactly, she's the one handling that matter.
Okay. And also, I want to bring, and I don't know, I don't know if the Captain knew about the vandalism that we had at our parks.
Yes. We're aware, Mike Witterger and I have had many discussions about it, as well as, I've shared some information that I can talk to you offline about it.
Offline? Okay. Yeah, that, we did not know about that, and I don't know if my colleagues know about it now. But that was...
Excuse me.
He was here.
Yeah, so we can talk about that, but I, you know, we just need to find out what happened to Sonatrol and everything else. And so I didn't know about that until I saw the photos myself, that, to the residents of Del Amo Park, and one of our other parks was vandalized heavily. So we'll just, and staff is on top of it, but Sonatrol needs to be alerted also. Captain, thank you. I'll wait for the detective to call me, and I appreciate everything that you've done. I'm working on your evaluation.
It's all bad, Captain. They're not putting anything good in there, just so you know. It's not going to be anything good in there.
Okay. But no, thank you, Captain. Any other comments?
I just want to piggyback on what they said. Most of the time, people reach out to us and ask us, like, hey, this happened over here, and I'll say, I haven't heard. So I know that it was a miscommunication that one time, but we got to have like a sequence. When y'all find out, we got to find out, because we are responding to people. And sometimes it'll be in Carson Crimes before, you know, I just look in Carson Crimes. If I haven't got it, I just look in Carson Crimes, and like, oh, well, they got a scanner, so they giving us the information. So please, just, as much as you can, and I know it wasn't you, it was like a lapse or whatever, so please let every deputy know, as much as we can, we should, we should know what's going on.
We should have better connections than the public.
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
You can give your staff member, her name's Gray, G-R-A-Y. I'm sure she'll want all our phone numbers, and make sure she has mine as well. But I want to compliment you, Captain. You are a very responsive and on-top-of-the-job captain. We've had many captains in the past decades, and you're an outstanding captain on our sheriff's station. I really appreciate you, and I appreciate your entire staff. When we need your help, you're there on all these levels, from information to actual action on the street. So you guys, you and the women do a great job at the Carson Station, and I just want you to know that you're very much appreciated by me and the residents.
Thank you for your support. I'll pass it on to the troops.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
Yes, Captain, I think you meant to say, me and the entire City Council.
We feel the support, and we're thankful to have it from you, all of us, all of
Dr. Clara Johnson is here, and I don't want to keep her out too long. So to our city photographer, we're going to go down and present her with her certificate also. Isn't she lovely? Let's go down and meet Dr. Clara Johnson. I want to take a picture of Frankie. Where's your certificate after I do Dr. Clara Johnson, because our photographer's here? But turn around, beautiful. We just said somewhere was 89 years, we celebrated. Can you hear me? Celebrated that birthday, but this beautiful lady is 90 years old. And she walked into that birthday party with her little crown on, and escorted by all these young men. I said, ooh wee, doctor, you still got it going on. But she's a longtime resident, still volunteering. She says, oh, I got a, received a notice, I need to come to the Women's Conference Planning Committee. I said, no, doctor, you don't need to come, that's okay. We know you're there. But she is just a blessing to this community, so is Frankie. And I want to... How important our seniors are to us, you know? I was at, they were 94, 96, still coming out, they wanted me to come up and have lunch with them. So, but they're a blessing. They are a blessing. And so what I want to say to you, my queen, my lovely queen, is happy birthday. And this is a certificate presented to Dr. Clara Johnson, Dr. Clara Johnson. In recognition of your accomplishments in life as you celebrate your 90th birthday, wishing you all the best wishes on this special occasion, and wishing you many, 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 many more happy and healthy years ahead. It's dated today, the 19th, even though your birthday was...
The 14th of August.
Of August. And I still wanted to bring it to her, because we, our agenda was for the following meeting, so we put it on this one, but we celebrate you. We appreciate you. And it's signed by your Mayor, Lula Davis Holmes, your Mayor Pro Tim, Jawan Hilton, your Councilman Cedric Hicks, your Councilwoman, Arlene B. Bugatia-Rojas, and your Councilmember, Jim Dear. We just want to say we love you.
I want to thank you all for inviting me to come. I was 90 years old, I thank God for being here. You know, some of us didn't wake up, but God blessed me, and I woke up, so I'm very thankful. Okay?
If you see her speeding down Avalon in her blue Lincoln, you know it's her.
You know, I love Clara, and she's such a wonderful, wonderful person. And so we want to be here the same time next year. But more importantly, I'd like to thank the Mayor and the City Council for being aware of the seniors in the City of Carson, and they do so much to support them. And so I'm just so thankful that we are here, and you just bring tears to my eyes, my darling. Thank you so much, and thank all of you guys. And I just want to say thank you to all of you that's here, that's still so young. So don't be hating on us, okay? Hey, let them hate. We're showing what it's all about.
And we're going to take one with you, Frankie, by yourself, because the photographer was not here. And this is for you, my dear. And thank you for bringing her, whoever drove her, she has a link. Sarah, hi. Sarah just brought, hi, Sarah. Come on up here, Sarah. Get in the photo, Sarah. Hi. Oh, my goodness, yes. We love you too.
I should be here, but thank you.
Don't look Frankie by herself. One with Frankie by herself.
She already had one by herself, right?
Oh, okay, good. Okay, good. Thank you, thank you, son. Thank you, everyone. We got it. There, number thirty-five, I'm going to move them up. Is Rita here? Come on Rita.
Checking, yes.
Much better.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council, thank you. Rita Kulchar with the Innovation Sustainability and Performance Management Department. I was asked to give a quick presentation on some of the EV charging station projects we have in the city. And I have two slides, very short. And really, what we, what I was asked to do today is just to, to give you a kind of snapshot as to what's going on. And as you can see from the map on the screen, we have a lot of EV charging station projects that are currently, that the city's currently undertaking. And they're all at a slightly different stage of completion. And all the yellow dots on the screen kind of show you where we have planned charging projects at city-owned sites. And this, this next slide is really a list of all of the locations broken down. You see the location, the address, the number of EV charging spaces that are planned, whether or not it's dual ports or single port chargers, and then the type of chargers. And we have fourteen different sites listed on this, this slide. And again, this is just a preview and we're going to come back over the next couple of months and give you more, more details as to each of the projects. But we really just want you to see that there's a lot of projects in the works and we have a lot of exciting things coming in the next couple of months.
Thank you, Rita. I've asked Rita to bring this to us every meeting and update or something because we have a lot going on in the city, especially with these EV charging stations. And I just think it's, the council should know what's, so you can answer questions when you're in the field. You can keep this chart, but these are all the sites and there are some other things that's going to be coming down. And so Rita will be coming to us with an update because we've been asking about where Tesla was and, and it's good just to hear from staff so we'll know, we're all on the same page. So that is my request that she brings it to us until these projects are complete.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any comments for my colleagues? This is a brief, quick and dirty presentation.
Madam Mayor, I do have a couple of questions.
Second, Councilman Hicks.
Yeah, I just had a quick conference, I mean, statement to say, Rita, thank you for bringing this. My only question is, the city, City Hall, and looking at City Hall as the other site location for the EV chargers, and that there is another project that's coming down the pipe that'll be brought before this council, I hope for the next council meeting in regards to the city of Carson actually generating its own energy. And we've just gotten the approval through CPA for that process and I don't want to say too much more about it, but we'll be, we're actually on the map for this one that's getting ready to take place in the city. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilman Dare.
Yes, thank you. I also thank you for this presentation, it's very informative. I think the public needs to know what we're doing as far as things that are innovative and progressive, and this is one of them. So the Tesla charger stations, have they changed their policy on letting other vehicles with adapters use their charging stations or are they still proprietary? Do you know?
So they've opened their network and they've gone through a couple of pilots on the east coast where they are letting non-Tesla vehicles charge at their Tesla superstations, supercharger stations. The only issue, some of the newer vehicles that want to charge there and can charge there, they, the way that they're configured, they can't reach, the, the charging cable can't reach their, the location of where they can plug it in. And so they have a newer model of the supercharger, instead of the version three, they have a version four. And I actually, we, we have an email and a, and a call earlier this week with Tesla to ask them if we're going to be getting, still getting the version three or if we can get the version four. And so they're working on it. They want to be able to provide us with the version four so that the cable can reach the other vehicle mix and models. But we don't know exactly when that version four is going to be available. The version three does come with an extra adapter plug that they can charge, it's just the cable itself is a little bit hard to maneuver. But what's also interesting and what's also kind of coming down the pipeline is that a couple of the EV automakers have signed an agreement with Tesla where some of the newer EV vehicles that are going to come out that are non, that are not Tesla but other makes and models are going to come equipped with the Tesla plug. So they don't need any kind of adapter, a regular Tesla plug will work on those EV models. So there's a lot of things happening in this space. It's really fluid and it's really kind of exciting to see how it all kind of transitions and what we're going to end up with, but we're tracking a lot of things.
I see. My second question is, especially at the public parks, when we have these charging stations and we have big events at the parks and how are you, how's the city going to have a policy on parking if it's impacted by a large number of vehicles?
So this, one thing that we talked about early on when we brought some of the projects forward to city council for approval is we wanted to bring back a policy on parking and the council can take an action and, and set the policy for, you know, who can and cannot park in the EV charging spaces. Right now there are signs that say only EV, only EV vehicles can park there, but at the end of the day, it's the council policy that can, that can steer who and who can't park there and whether or not they're going to get cited. And so when we do have large events, it could be just the city policy where we, you know, put up signs that say, you know, open to all vehicles, et cetera, so nobody gets ticketed. But if there is a strong demand for parking of EVs, you may not decide you want to do that, but when the time comes, we can definitely share that, bring it to the council and get some direction.
Okay, and so, third question and last question. What about the cost to the public for utilizing these electric vehicle charging stations? Are some of them free or some of them, you know, you, you pay with a credit card or can you explain that so the public can understand? Because they're asking me, are they free? And I said, well, I'll ask Rita.
So the way, so we have fourteen different locations and there's some, eleven of the fourteen are part of the SCE Chargerity Program and those eleven, we've already, the council has already approved a contract with the vendor to own and operate the, the charging stations to maintain it and oversee all the networking. And so there are predetermined price levels for how much folks can be charged, to charge at these stations. And so they're not going to be free. However, if the council decided that they wanted to encourage more EV adoption or they wanted to, you know, encourage folks to use the chargers, they could come up with a policy to waive the fee. And that's something we can bring back to the council, but we'd have to do the economics and share the financials with you if that was something the city council wanted to do.
I see, very good. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rita. And we'll look for more updates, but thank you. Because I had a concern about Tesla, where they were, I know we approved it some time ago. And it was, it's, the delay is no fault of the city of Carson is what I want to make sure everyone realizes. So, thank you, Rita, and we'll see you as, in two weeks or in a month.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next I'll go to all communications for matters listed on the agenda. Madam City Clerk, do you have any items, for items?
Madam Mayor, I have a few public comments, none are which for agenda items, they're all non-agenda.
Okay, then non-agenda, we'll get to those later.
Okay.
Approval of the minutes for September fifth.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's been moved improperly second, please cast your vote. Madam Clerk?
And Madam Holmes. Thank you.
Yes, it's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Move for approval of the consent calendar items number ten through thirty-two.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second, who would like to pull an item? I'd like to prove item, pull item number fourteen for discussion after we do our presentation. Item fourteen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And also if we may push item number thirty-two, our attorneys have advised that the contract, there's still some language that needs to be fixed. And so we'll bring that back hopefully for October third.
Oh, thank you.
That'll be continued to the council.
Yes, please.
Yes. We're going to move for approval of the consent calendar with exceptions of item fourteen and thirty-two. It's been moved improperly second. Item number fourteen I will bring, bring back towards the end of the meeting. I'm going to take the liberty of the chair to move up item number thirty-five. Item number thirty-five is Senator Adoption of the City's Economic Development Strategic Plan. To my colleagues, that's your second notebook. To my colleagues, I had the opportunity to present this plan to the Economic Development Commission. They were very excited about the fact that we were doing, moving in this direction. Had a lot of nice comments to say about it. So tonight is before us, this presentation was presented a couple of months ago, is to approve and ask questions on our, the proposed economic development, development strategic plan. And so Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item will be presented, as you stated, for the Economic Development Strategic Plan. Our Director of Community Services, or excuse me, Community Development, Mr. Said Nasee is going to introduce the presenters for this evening and providing a brief presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Roger Dale will be presenting the Economic Development Strategic Plan. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mayor Davis Holmes and members of the council. I'm delighted to be here this evening to present our final destination, if you will, in terms of our strategic planning process for economic development. And as the mayor mentioned, we had the opportunity to give a preview of this presentation a couple of weeks ago at the Economic Development Commission and excited to be here to share it with you this evening. This process, as you recall, was a multi-firm, multidisciplinary planning effort. And my firm is the Nadelson Dale Group. We are an economic development consultant and we are part of the team that is led by RRM Design Group, which is an urban planning and design firm, represented this evening by Katja Dillman, who would be also pleased to share with you or answer any questions you might have about their aspects of the work. We also had on the team a specialist in tourism and in particular, sports-related venues and tourism, that's HVS. And I'll describe some of their work this evening as well. And then finally, we had Catalyst Environmental, who was looking at some of the environmental issues that might be either constraints or opportunities for economic development in Carson, especially related to opportunities for brownfield remediation and how that might clear a path for additional development. So this planning process has gone on for the past year or so, and I know we've had the opportunity to touch base with you at several points during the way and, and as I said, glad to be here this evening to kind of share where we have, have ended up. I've mentioned the multidisciplinary team that has supported this. And the process involved a combination of technical studies and research by the different members of the consultant team, as well as a substantial amount of input from your community. And I know a number of you have been in the loop or have participated. We also had a series of stakeholder workshops over a period of several months that were an opportunity to get direct input from the, the business community and other stakeholders concerned about economic and workforce development. All of that came together in what we call a SWOT assessment, looking at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats related to the city of Carson's path forward economically. And then based on those, that assessment of where the opportunities are and where there are needs for, to address challenges, we have put together the Economic Development Strategic Plan, EDSP. And a particular component of it that I like to focus on this evening is the action plan. What, what are we actually recommending that the city would do in terms of implementation All of this came together around a theme that emerged from our stakeholder participation of Carson, where creativity comes to live, work and play. And I hope that you'll see that woven into the various strategies and action items that I'll describe now. This plan is intended to guide the city's economic development programs and policies for approximately the next five to ten years. And I should mention that it includes things that we hope the city will implement immediately. In fact, a number of the things we're talking about are already underway and, and being effective as we speak. And those things, we would expect to see some near-term results. There are also components of this plan that I would describe as more visionary or ambitious. And those are things where you would begin now to make investments and to put policies in place for things that you might not see come to full fruition for five or ten years or more. Part of the background research that we did was to look at the industries that are strong in Carson and have grown here and are also growing in the surrounding Los Angeles County economy. And we have defined a set of target industries that are part of, are woven into the different strategies that I'll, I'll describe in a moment. In particular, there are six key industry groups that we think deserve attention as part of this plan, and I'll just describe them. And I would say that each of these is on here for different reasons. Some of them are already strong here, some are things that could be strong here in the future with a particular focus in marketing. And there are some things here that have also maybe run their course and are, and are going to be de-emphasized, but they're still important to focus on in terms of retention or a transitioning strategy. First thing I'll mention is the visitor economy. And this is really the, one of the key opportunities that our partner, HVS Consulting, looked at in terms of how can the city better leverage the opportunities it has because of the unique sports venues you have here and other entertainment-related activities. Naturally, Dignity Health Sports Park, the Porsche Experience Center, the Goodyear Blimp, things that already attract... as we speak, and those things, we would expect to see some near-term results. There are also components of this plan that I would describe as more visionary or ambitious, and those are things where you would begin now to make investments and to put policies in place for things that you might not see come to full fruition for five or 10 years or more. Part of the background research that we did was to look at the industries that are strong in Carson and have grown here, and are also growing in the surrounding Los Angeles County economy. And we have defined a set of target industries that are part of, are woven into the different strategies that I'll describe in a moment. In particular, there are six key industry groups that we think deserve attention as part of this plan, and I'll just describe them. And I would say that each of these is on here for different reasons. Some of them are already strong here, some are things that could be strong here in the future with a particular focus in marketing, and there are some things here that have also maybe run their course and are going to be de-emphasized, but they're still important to focus on in terms of retention or a transitioning strategy. First thing I'll mention is the visitor economy, and this is really the, one of the key opportunities that our partner, HVS Consulting, looked at in terms of how can the city better leverage the opportunities it has because of the unique sports venues you have here and other entertainment-related activities. Naturally, Dignity Health Sports Park, the Porsche Experience Center, the Goodyear Blimp, things that already attract significant numbers of visitors to the city, but in many cases are not fully leveraged in the sense that you're not retaining those visitors to spend as much money here as they could and should be. So, we want to leverage that and see how we can better expand the full-service visitor economy. Next area is clean tech, and this is one of those exciting areas that represents, I would say, a transition from old to new, from one of your legacy industries, which of course is energy production, oil extraction, and leverage that or marry that with what is becoming an important growth sector nationally, really, but especially in parts of Los Angeles County and Southern California, and that we would call clean tech. There's already a presence of these types of firms in Carson, and that's something we can build on, and we see that as a key priority of this strategy. Next area would be manufacturing, something that maybe not a lot of people regionally know about, but Carson is a manufacturing stronghold, it's got an existing presence of these firms, and that's something we definitely want to celebrate here and build on, especially in a larger regional economy that doesn't necessarily have growth capacity for more of these types of activities. So, something we could definitely see additional focus on as part of a marketing strategy for Carson. Next thing I'll mention is logistics, and this is something I know you're all very well aware of, the opportunities that that has presented in this community over the past decades, and has been a major opportunity for development of industrial land and buildings. And we know that there are also concerns about logistics in terms of the impacts it potentially has on traffic and road maintenance and those types of concerns. So, it's something that we're not necessarily recommending as a focus of new business attraction, but we also recognize it has been an important part of your growth and part of the economy, and will continue to be. And so, we're looking for opportunities to transition into other industrial land uses that might have a better impact in terms of job creation and the types of jobs and the types of connections it might have to the larger economy. So, logistics is theirs, we're acknowledging it as a strength, not focusing on it as a new attraction target. The market will probably continue to bring those opportunities with or without the city's action, but to think about ways that that can be leveraged into what we might call higher value or higher-impact industries. Next area is professional creative, and this is one where, that I would say is probably the least present or least developed currently in Carson, but there are some potential fairly strong connections here. First of all, the whole focus on the visitor economy and the entertainment sector is, has a definite connection to the creative arts, and we all know that we are in a region where this is a very important industry, and we believe that Carson can potentially position itself as a location for those types of activities. That's going to take some kind of rebranding of the community and some repositioning in many respects, but as a long-term part of that overall package or overall vision for Carson as a creative place, we think this could be an opportunity. The final thing I mentioned is construction-related industries. That not only, not only includes construction contractors or construction services, but there's also some presence in the city already of construction-related manufacturing. And this is an area that we are recommending to include, but primarily as a workforce development focus, so looking at ways to train an excellent construction workforce for true careers in the construction services industry. And that kind of recognizes the idea that a construction worker is mobile, because construction projects are not necessarily confined to the place where the firm is headquartered, but can be throughout the region. So, it's not as important to have the firms located here, of course, you welcome them when they come, but more importantly, you can leverage that presence or that expertise within your workforce to create opportunities for Carson residents in the city and around the region. We have organized our action plan around eight game changer, what we're calling game-changer initiatives, and each of these is detailed in terms of specific strategies and action items, and if you've had an opportunity to review our document, you'll see that there are 21 specific strategies, and each of those has a number of action items, so it's a detailed plan. But this evening, I'd like to just focus at a high level on these eight major initiatives that we're calling game changers. And I think it's a good way for, as you, as council members and other leaders in the community get out and talk about this plan, think about these eight game changers, because they have a certain high visibility, high-impact character to them that I think would be great to focus on. The first one is, I would put under the heading of overall positioning of your economic development program, and game changer number one is a marketing and branding initiative. In effect, rebranding the city's economic development program, getting a more positive and visible message out about the opportunities that exist in Carson for different types of development and business growth, and integrating that across all aspects of this other action, other elements of this action plan. And I'll refer back to that in several cases for these other game changers as well. The next set of game changers are under the heading of visitor economy, which we've already described as very important and a huge opportunity here. The first one is game changer number two, is to create a destination-worthy downtown. This has in particular been a major focus of the work that RRM Design Group has included as part of this process, and a number of those recommendations are integrated into our plan as well. Game changer number three is to create a live entertainment district, which would better leverage the presence of major activity generators, Dignity Health Sports Park, Cal State Dominguez Hills, and the Porsche Experience Center. Have a, create a place where those visitors can come and spend additional time and money in the city and create more business opportunities. Game changer number four is to reinvigorate retail. Again, there are gaps in your existing retail base, I know you've got some very strong regional-serving retail facilities here, but you've also got some gaps, and we know that the retail industry overall in general is under some stress in terms of the way that it is responding to increasing e-commerce and online purchases, and there will be opportunities to reposition existing retail shopping centers and to keep them viable in the face of those changes globally. The next couple of game changers are under the heading of ready-for-business, and the first, the first one there is game changer number five, become the most business and development-friendly city in Los Angeles County, and we'll talk more about some of the things that could accompany that in a moment. Game changer number six is to incentivize land uses with high job creation and placemaking value, and again, I'll talk more about some examples there later. And then finally, we've got two game changer initiatives under the heading of the tech-focused economy. Number seven is to position Carson as a technology startup leader, and then number eight is to position Carson as a training center of excellence, and that's a workforce-development-related training focus. I'd like to just quickly highlight the components of each of these game changers, and then I'd be delighted to ask or to answer questions you might have about the details, but just a few of the highlights now. Game changer number one, as we mentioned, is a marketing and branding initiative to position Carson as a center of innovation, creativity, and resilience, leveraging your rich industrial legacy and unmatched location within Southern California. This would include actions like upgrading your economic development website and your social media strategy, promoting specific development sites and the incentives that the city could package to create development opportunities. It would have a definite business attraction component focusing on capturing firms within Los Angeles County that might be expanding or needing new locations, and things that would fit within those six industry clusters that we were especially targeting. There would be a specific focus on retail and restaurant recruitment, and I know from talking with members of your council that this has been something that has been a longstanding concern about the city, is the need to, for example, attract more restaurants and to create a concentration, so this would be a specific focus of the marketing effort. There would also be kind of an internal marketing campaign focused on your existing business community to raise awareness of the city's resources for business assistance. And then also, a whole component of this would focus on tourism and visitation promotion, what we're calling Stay Carson, and the concept of creating more opportunities for hotel stays, retail and restaurant purchases based on visitors who currently come to the city but don't stay very long, as long as they could to spend money here. Game changer number two is to create a destination-worthy downtown, which would be anchored by a repositioned Carson Event Center, potentially additional hotels and new housing. We know that the Carson Event Center project is already in motion, and that's, that would be a great anchor for, overall for the downtown. One potential specific thing that we believe could be done fairly near-term is to attract a new hotel adjacent to the event center that would position the area as more of a place for major meetings and conferences. We know you've already got some new housing, relatively new housing, very, very high caliber in the downtown area, and some more projects underway. That, that all can be leveraged to create a sense of place that people would identify as downtown Carson. And very importantly, we want to link the downtown to the larger Avalon Corridor, potentially physically linked by design and consistent thematic design standards, as well as physically linked possibly by a shuttle system. One of the specific recommendations here is, is a initial focus on improvement plan for the Avalon Corridor. Think about positioning Carson to be ready for primetime when the components of the Olympics come here in a few years. How do you want that part of your community to look to those, to those visitors? And we've got a specific ideas outlined here for those improvements. And then there could be other placemaking investments, and again, this is something that RRM and their recommendations has described in quite a bit of detail. Game changer number three is the live entertainment district. That would include restaurants, retail, hotel, mixed-use housing. We haven't identified a specific site here, this could be one or multiple sites, would like to see something that's ideally within walking distance of Dignity Health Sports Park and also close to Cal State Dominguez Hills, but there could be other sites closer to the downtown to include these types of uses. And ultimately, this would be a private developer investment, a developer-driven process, and we're recommending that the city could serve as sort of a clearinghouse capacity to recruit a master developer and to market sites that might be suitable for that type of development. I've already mentioned game changer, game changer number four, reinvigorate retail. That would include activities like the retail restaurant tenant recruitment campaign. In other words, the city can invest marketing dollars in recruiting tenants and thereby make it a more attractive place for the development community to build a retail space, and also to exist, assist existing retail centers to fill in vacancies within their spaces. That would involve some coordination with property owners who might own major retail properties to see what their opportunities might be to introduce new land uses, to intensify and kind of reinvigorate the investment from their perspective, and to keep the retail footprint of their properties viable as you create additional activity around them. And then, there could also be specific incentives that the city could put in place that would either encourage renovation of existing retail properties, and I know your, for example, your facade improvements funding program has been very successful initially, we'd like to see that expanded. There might be other cases, though, where a property no longer maybe needs to be a retail shopping center, and there might be ways to incentivize transitioning to other land uses that would fit better within your overall economic development priorities. Game changer number five is to transform Carson into the most business and development-friendly in Los Angeles County by streamlining all of your development permitting and entitlement processes. And this is something that was identified during our stakeholder outreach as a, as a concern about the way this process currently happens in the city, and I think it's acknowledged that in the past, staffing constraints, financial constraints on the city's part have perhaps not allowed as much focus here as could be the case, but it's a priority, and we, and we're excited that we understand the city is already in the process of making some significant improvements in terms of software solutions for approval processes and permitting processes, replacing certain functions that were once handled by the county with other options to speed them up, and there are some additional things that can be done along those lines. So, those are great efforts that are underway, and the idea is to continue that and also to get the message out in, through your marketing program that you are open for business and very business-friendly and development-friendly. Game changer number six is to focus policies and resources and partnerships in ways that incentivize land uses with high job creation and placemaking value. And this is really a category that includes a number of diverse activities or areas of focus. Could include, for example, investments along the Dominguez Channel, making that a more attractive place for recreational use, as well as making the adjacent properties more attractive from a development standpoint. Could look at options for redevelopment of the links of Victoria Golf Course, opportunities for professional office development. We talked about creating a center or a focus on professional and creative industries. At the present time, there aren't great locations in the city for that to happen, so focusing on attracting some office development or creating an office district could be a long-term opportunity. I think a very near-term option is to look at recruitment of manufacturing and/or R&amp;D-type firms as industrial tenants. And also, in this category, we, we think that the focus here, in many ways, it's often thought of as a challenge, you've got some brownfield areas that need remediation, that's also an opportunity, because Carson has a track record for dealing with those successfully and can be a national best practices leader for that type of remediation, and that also has opportunities related to federal and state funding sources that can potentially be brought to the community to address those issues. Okay, game changer number seven, and position Carson as a technology startup leader and a partner with established technology companies. Initially, there would be a focus on clean tech and the transitioning of the legacy energy industries, and this is the strategy where you would pull together all of your entrepreneurial development programs, and many of those could be handled through partnerships, for example, with Cal State Dominguez Hills and other universities in the region that would be very interested in focusing on clean tech and supporting a program here, coordinating with your existing legacy oil and energy firms to identify what their plans are for transitioning and how they might, they might see that integrating into new opportunities under the heading of clean tech. As I mentioned, there's opportunities to pursue state and federal funding to support that transitioning. And then, perhaps longer term, we've recognized that you are fairly close location to what's called the Silicon Beach area, and closer to the coast, and that's an area that will be at some point needing expansion capacity, and we think Carson could be well-positioned to attract some of those types of firms as well. Okay, last but not least, is a game changer number eight, is to position Carson as a training center of excellence, and this here is the opportunity to link your workforce development programs to the staffing and hiring and training needs of emerging industries. This is an area where we don't see the city providing services directly, these would continue to be provided through partnerships, as you do currently. The idea is to kind of refocus those partnerships and really position it as a marketing asset as you're talking to these prospective firms and industries. One of the areas that we're initially suggesting you would focus on is a showcase program that links your construction industry to training and career development for Carson residents who are in the construction trades. After describing the game changers, I wanted just to briefly talk about the organizational resources that we're recommending for implementing this plan. As I've mentioned, this is a plan that involves some activities that are already underway, but it's also got some very ambitious activities that there is not a current staffing in the city to really effectively handle it, and it will involve, require really realistically new staff to carry this forward. So, in particular, we're recommending two staff positions dedicated to implementation of this action plan. The first would be an economic development manager, and then also, an administrative specialist, and these would be housed within the Community Development Department. The existing Community Development Director would have a clear role in this as well, but mostly, that would be tied to- but mostly that would be tied to existing roles of the community development department. So we're not necessarily assigning new tasks to the director. And much of this can be handled through partnerships. And if you look at the details of the plan, many of the activities refer to the city coordinating with partners or serving as sort of a clearinghouse for activities that are actually led and funded by other organizations. And that's really a key focus here to leverage the city's investment through these other organizations that are already active in these types of programs. And then finally, there's some activities here that would probably be best handled by outside contractors. One particular example would be the marketing program I mentioned. Probably would benefit at least initially from having a private professional marketing or advertising agency to help set up that program. And then staff could take it over in later years, the implementation. But I think that some initial focus from contracted activities would help with that as well as some of the other things that are outlined in the strategy. At this point, I would again like to thank you for the opportunity of working with this great community. Really enjoyed every time we've set foot here. It's been an interesting and exciting experience, including the great presentations we saw before. They're part of a meeting tonight. Just kind of gives us a sense of the real quality of this community. And we think there are tremendous opportunities here for economic development. It's going to take some investment and some commitment on this part of the city to stick with economic development for the long haul. As I mentioned, there's some things that you would see some immediate results from. And there's some other things that will take some long-term sustained commitments to bring these opportunities to light. But we think that their commitment is there and I'm excited to have been a part of this. At this point, I'd be very happy to answer any questions you might have. And as I mentioned, Katya Dilman is here from RRM Design Group if there are questions about the design aspects of the project as well. So thank you.
Well, I want to thank you for the presentation. I've enjoyed it each time. And the Economic Development Commission is very excited about it, this plan. They, JR, correct me if I'm wrong. They are, if we should approve this, they have been given a task. They are no longer just coming to lunch, but they're excited about being part of the implementation phase once everything in place. And the word that they got, well, the board that I received before is at last we have something to do. We will have something to do other than come and talk because the way we explained it to them was this is a team approach. You know, it takes us all to make this dream become a reality. And it's something that has short-term and long-term goals. And I think JR and Sahid, if this plan is approved, they will be coming, putting together a plan of action for not for, that the commission wants to be involved in implementing and processing. So it was a good presentation. I'm excited about it. And so MPT, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Incredible presentation. That's what we've been talking about, the city that you drive to and not drive through, right? Being the destination city that we are. You talked about leveraging partnerships. So with slide number six, include a leverage of a partnership, like the redesign of the Links, because we don't own that property. So we have to partner with LA County to figure out exactly, are they open to a partnership of some new development of sort where the city of Carson gets in? Are we either find a developer to develop the land? That's a question.
Yes, so that's a great example of a partnership. As you point out, the city doesn't own that land and the county would in some ways drive what the options are there. But I think the opportunity is to sit down with the county and show them all the work that's been done in the community and how this fits into a larger vision. The research that we've done that documents the market demand and development opportunities that might be there. And to work with them to, over time, get their buy-in on the ideas that would bring value to the community. And also, as you've said, that could be a key site to position Carson as a place you go to and not through. And I think that it would be, it's a great opportunity for the city, but also for the county. And I think to bring them along with that vision is what the next step would be.
Great, I'm complete. Incredible presentation. I think this is talking points for when we got through the community, what people are asking for, when is Carson doing this? What is Carson doing? These are all the things that people, and finally, with this council and this innovation and technology department and economic development, finally, we have a city that's actually going after things, letting people know that we're here. Carson is one of the only cities in the South Bay that actually has land that still can be developed, places that can still be built. And we are the crown jewel of the South Bay. And I don't think we get enough recognition, but it's on its way. They're about to bow down.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And I wanted to follow up one more idea about partnerships and also following up what the mayor said. I would really encourage you to think of your Economic Development Commission as a very critical partner in this process. That group is, represents a number of the organizations that you would want to be directly involved. The sports park, Cal State Dominguez Hills, major development. Those are the types of players that you've already got at the table. And I think that is a great, that commission is a great vehicle for continuing their involvement, their individual organizations as well as the commission in actively supporting this plan.
Thank you. And in response to the staffing, I want to say to our city manager, I think you're in the process of recruiting an economic development manager and staff. So those are things we've done. We already have a consultant for branding. We've met with them several times. They had to go back to the drawing table. And to the residents, when I was elected, this was one of my nine initiatives that we wanted to march through Georgia, as I say, and implement what it takes for Carson to become the city that it's destined to become. I know other people have talked about an economic development plan, but this one is in writing. It has short and long-term goals. And some of these will be implemented after there is a new council, but there will be a blueprint, something in writing that we can all see and the city manager and his staff can adhere to. But I was really, really, really excited about the comments that came from the economic development. That commission represents just about all the major key players in the city. And we put it together, not based upon friendship, not that you worked on my campaign. What does it take to have a vision for the city? So you have Prologix on there, you have Dignity Health on there. You've got Cal State Dominguez Hills at the table. You have the representatives from the hotels. So we have key players on there that says, thank you for giving us an opportunity to be a part of this plan. So I'm really excited about it. Councilman Hicks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that presentation. Each time I see it, it's tweaked a little bit better than the last time from before. So I thank you for that. I'm very excited about, it covers our young adults. One of the things you talked about was an entertainment Mecca that we have in the community. I've always talked about Carson Live, something where our young people can go to. We're trying to get the demographics of our city upwards from my age and older. So we need to bring in the younger people, like my own kids. And also addressing families, business community, children and our seniors. One thing I didn't see, maybe it was in there, something to do with housing. And I know that we talked about the high-end housing, but we didn't talk about any of that. And I talked about, and the mayor talks about as well, the missing middle. We have individuals who actually are making $80,000 a year but can't afford a place to live, but will be a good addition to this community. So I just think that's what's missing in the project itself. But other than that, I love it. It's, for me, it's doable and I'm glad that we have it. At least we have something to work with at this point in time.
Well, thank you. And I would like to say something about housing as well. A number of these programs do reference the need for a range of housing options in the city to fulfill this vision. The plan that I'm presenting tonight is one of a series of documents that were developed through this contract. And the city has all those and you can access them to refer to as you need. One of them specifically was about housing. And that was one of the work products that RRM Design Group led. Our firm also took a look at the market demand for different types of housing. So that documents opportunities to expand housing across a wide range of housing products and prices for the reasons you just described. So definitely hasn't been left out. It was one of the key areas of focus for this process. And as I said, you'll have that document separate from the plan itself, but that backs up a lot of the recommendations. Thank you.
Councilman Deere?
Thank you. I will segue into the councilman's comments about housing. We already have a variety of housing in Carson and a variety of price ranges and products. I think any healthy community should have a variety. You certainly have to have market rate apartment buildings, for instance. Why? Because it attracts young families to your community who can't afford to buy a house yet, but then they fall in love with Carson. And then they say, I want to buy my house in Carson. We're in Carson already, our kids are in school here. We're going to buy in Carson. So you can't be against apartments, otherwise that system won't work. And you had a very good presentation tonight and it's very much appreciated. Though some people don't want to think about the past, but you know, we had this type of presentation 20 years ago. And we started out happy and eager and enthusiastic and we started making things happen. We attracted a number of restaurants. At the time, 20 years ago, when Chili's opened up, there had not been a new national chain restaurant opened up in Carson in 20 years. I called that at the time, an economic drought. And so, you know, I'm going to be a realist. I know some of my colleagues might not like it. They may giggle and snicker and everything. But if we're going to make this work, we have to be smart. We have to look at the pitfalls, avoid those pitfalls, avoid the problems that we learned exists. And we talk about Carson being the jewel of the South Bay. We could be the jewel of the South Bay. It is a great community. We have million-dollar-plus homes in Carson already. We have a great potential. And as you know, our motto, future unlimited. But you know, we cannot just come forward tonight or in the next few months with this, this grandiose plan that we're going to do all these wonderful things. And it sounds good, but what we need from you is how? How to make it happen? Otherwise, we're just giving people, you know, expectations and they'll be let down. That's not the right approach. I'm very visionary. I think about what the city will look like in five years, 10 years, 30 years, 50 years. And this council also thinks about that, I believe. Past councils, not so much. So that's important. And we unfortunately have a hodgepodge of developments all over the city that are not coordinated. We unfortunately have special interests that want things put in place because it's going to make money for them. What we need is a definitive economic development strategy and a public safety plan. Because all these great ideas will never work if we don't have security for our residents. If people don't feel safe in Carson, we're not going to have visitors from outside the city drive here to go to a restaurant if they could drive somewhere else and they feel safer. We're not going to have people coming to our city to shop if they don't feel safe. So we have to tie this together. We have to tie together a public safety plan with economic development strategy, I think is very, very important. If we don't do that, 20 years from now, there'll be council members sitting here with another presentation about what we can do. So let's really make it happen. We have to change the image of our city. You know, we love Carson. People who live here love Carson. Many people visit here and they enjoy it. But there are many people who would differ with us on whether or not Carson is the place to move to, whether or not Carson is the place to open a business, whether or not Carson is the future. Well, we want it to be the future. Our strengths are obvious. We have tremendous diversity in our population. That's beautiful, wonderful. It could be a model for the country. Secondly, our location, as you pointed out, is an excellent location for economic development. When people ask me, where's Carson? I tell them, well, we're between Disneyland and Hollywood. And you know, we are. We have tremendous potential because of our location in Southern California. Now, if we don't take advantage of these strengths and we just talk about, well, let's set up a plan, but the plan doesn't have a how to it. And so what I'd like to see from your firm and the other firm is how do we reach these goals? If we can agree as a council and a staff, sometimes the council wants to do something. And I'm talking about history. And I know some council members don't like to think about what happened in the past. But the staff didn't agree with the council and they didn't want to do it. Case in point, a number of years ago, I advocated for the city of Carson to cut the contract with the county for building and safety and plan check. Get rid of that contract. Only this year did we do that. Because I had to ask a councilwoman to bring forward my idea, and she did, in order to get it passed. If I had brought it up, certain members of the city council would say, no, 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 don't want to do that. That's not a team effort. That's not thinking with unity. That's not thinking about the future of the city. It's not thinking about the good of the residents. It's thinking about selfish political goals of individuals. That, I'm sorry to say, has been a defining factor in why Carson hasn't progressed further than we have so far. Another issue, completely different issue. We had a redevelopment agency, worked very well. We didn't do anything wrong with it, but the state took it away from all the cities that had agencies. What we would like to do is partner with the state of California to get the state to agree to create a type of redevelopment agency for brownfields, for landfills, so that we can make use of all these parcels of land in Carson that haven't been developed. Think about why they haven't been developed. They haven't been developed because it's expensive, it's difficult. But if we have the state of California supporting us in doing that, and maybe your firm, sir, could help us get those connections through the state. So we, as a city, can partner with the state to clean up all of these areas and make them productive parcels of land. Right now, they're not productive. Right now, they're sitting there and we have 157-acre parcel of land that's a landfill, a Cal complex landfill site. There's been attempts to develop it over the years. It's now being developed. But instead of having it a retail location, most of it is going to be, it has been rezoned to industrial. And we're going to put six warehouses, two blocks away from City Hall. Is that a good strategy? Well, you know, it's what's happening. So we can have all the strategies we want, but unless we make it happen, it's not going to happen. And we have to work together. My council colleagues have to pay attention to one another, work as a team, work with the staff and work with your firm to make that happen. So the reason I'm saying this is we all have the same goal, but we're unwilling to cooperate to reach that goal. And your firm is independent. You don't have a horse in the race. You don't have a bias. You can present to us what needs to be done. In other words, tell us the how. So I think I've reached the point where my colleagues are now a little bit unhappy that I've talked for so long. But you know, the truth is, the truth has to be spoken. Otherwise, we're just going to go around and around and around. There was a reason that we had a 20-year economic drought. There was a reason that we had a 20-year economic drought. No vision. We finally have a vision. We're moving in the right direction. But let's work as a team to make that happen. This this idea of making Carson a business-friendly city, I knew we weren't going to get the number-one spot because our code of our building and safety and plan check wasn't business-friendly. Now it is. It's a great change. It's a change I advocated for for years and years, but I couldn't get my colleagues to agree. I couldn't even get the staff to agree to do it until a councilwoman presented it. She presented my idea, she did a good job, and it worked, and now we have our own. So those type of steps are struggles, and the City of Carson, if we struggle together, we will win. If we work together, we will win. And only if we work together, because otherwise, history repeats itself. And your firm is very qualified. You have high integrity. You have the best intentions, and we need to work closely with you. And so that's why I'm glad you gave your presentation tonight. It is a very good presentation. But I'm going to say it one more time, and I'm not a person that likes to repeat themselves, but this time I am, just in case someone isn't listening. Please work with us with the how. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And yes, thank you for that great presentation. So, you know, I am the newest member here, and I'm proud that my presence here is inspiring us all to get things done. And so I wasn't here 20 years ago, but I'm not going to dwell on that either. I am looking forward to what we're going to do in the future, moving forward. And I'm proud that this council is working together with staff, with the business community, with the community. And, you know, Councilman Jim Dear kept talking about how. Oh, we know how. You have the vision. We have the same vision. How we do it, with teamwork and working together as one. And I want to thank the current city council and staff and everyone for working together, and I'm proud to be here today and get things going. So I'm ready. Let's get the shovels and let's start moving dirt. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I couldn't agree more with my colleague. I was I was sitting here getting the history lesson, and I was 20, 23 in college when all of this was happening. So I wasn't here either. And I just think it's time for us to move forward as we have different industries, tech, industrial, all of these industries that were, love to come to our community. I do believe they sit and they watch our council meetings to see if this is a place or an environment they would like to be in. And I want to just pause tonight and say, anybody who's watching, we welcome you in our community. This is going to be the next destination city. You may want to get in right now while you have the chance before everybody knocks down our door. We have incredible partners that are coming, and we're ready to move the city forward in spite of what what has happened. We're here to move the city forward. And let's let's work on today. Something that I look at it often. When I drive in my car, the windshield is bigger than the rearview mirror. So if we're always looking back, we'll actually have a crash. So we got to look forward, and we can't always look back. So Carson is ready to look forward. We're ready to move forward. I think this council, as we're united together, will all move forward because this is the Carson that we want to see. This is the Carson that the 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 former, former, former mayor dreamed about. They just didn't have the tactics and the tools that we have now to bring it all to pass. So what a joy it would be to sit back 20 years later to say, hey, we had an assistance, we built a plan, we built some level of infrastructure to do that. It might not be completed in our term and in our timing, but we'll always be able to say, we had a part in that. We were able to do that. We were able to kind of, you know, there's a there's a saying that says that one plants, one waters, and then someone else gives the increase. So when we plant, we could be planting today, somebody, the next council may water it, and then the next council may see it come to pass. We don't know, but these are the seeds that we're trying to sow today. So I appreciate you greatly, this amazing presentation. I'm excited about the future of Carson. It's going to be the city to drive to and not drive through, so I'm grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, I'm really encouraged by what all of you have said this evening. I think there is, there's obviously a commitment here to move forward with this. This plan, we all agree, creates a vision, and a lot of that came right from your community. It wasn't, it's not our community to tell you what your vision should be. You guys had a great direction on that, and we kind of put it together in a document. But what we also hope we've added here is is the how. And there, this this plan lays out essentially a five-year work program, step by step, for your economic development staff, and also lays out a program for reporting back progress and success or lack of success to you on a regular basis so that collectively you can stay committed, keep keep on track and keep this moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. And I did see the how. We've talked about the who. That's our economic development manager and his staff, the assistant director, and the Economic Development Commission. Read the plan. It's a blueprint. And like our colleague said, it may not all happen in our lifetime, but we have a blueprint. So I. What is the recommendation on this?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the city economic development strategic plan and direct staff to proceed to the implementation phase of the EDSP.
It's been moved and properly second. Are there any questions, comments, discussion?
Just that it's a good idea, needs to be moved forward on, and, you know, I think all five of us should support it.
Cast your vote.
Madam Mayor, it's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that presentation and staff will, we need something further from you, we will be in touch with you, but we have a plan, and we have some guidelines. So I appreciate.
We finally have a plan.
Finally. We finally have a plan and some guidelines.
And one other thing, would you please call me, and I will give you some information that you'll find very valuable?
I'd be glad to. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda, I want to go back to item number 14. It was the item that I pulled. Yeah, that's the big book. I pulled that item. Mr. City Manager, you want to do a report real first?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, this is item number 14. It was a quarterly financial report to the city council to provide a status update on how the ARPA American Rescue Plan Act is being used and provide an overview on projects' timeline, budget, and estimated date of completion. I believe, Madam Mayor, you had some inquiries previously to this particular item, and staff is here to present and provide the information that you had requested. And so at this time, I will introduce and provide, or they'll provide, I should say, this particular presentation, which will be our Director of Finance, Mr. William Jefferson, and our Senior Budget Analyst, Mr. Ralston R.T. Turner.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Can you hear me?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members. This evening, I'd like to present the quarterly report for our American Rescue Plan Act, and particularly the projects that are financed by this federal money. I'd like to begin for the public to give them a refresh of how we acquired these federal funds. On March 11, 2021, President Biden and the 117th Congress approved a $1.9 trillion stimulus package, one of the largest stimulus packages in American history, to help municipalities recover from the COVID-19 pandemic shutdowns. Of that $1.9 trillion, the City of Carson received $17.8 million. I'd like to also let the public and businesses know that on March 15, 2022, council approved a resolution 22-039 for the use of the monies, and particularly what projects are to be financed by ARPA. I'd like to reiterate that these funds must be obligated by December 31, 2024, and fully spent down by December 31, 2026. Right now, out of the $17.8 million that was awarded to the City of Carson, there's $5.5 million left year-to-date to be spent. I have this chart here for the public to see the percentage of how much was spent down for each project that was awarded ARPA funds. So right now, we spent 69% of the $17.7 million. Now, I'll go through all the projects that are financed by the ARPA money. First one up right now is the CY Slurry Seal project that was awarded $3.3 million. If you remember, this past winter, we had unprecedented rainfall, which caused delays in the completion of the project. Now, staff's saying that the remaining 25% will be completed by June 2024.
And that's not all the streets in the City of Carson. That's the ones that are in need, was in need of immediate attention, am I correct?
I would like to defer that question to our.
Our Public Works.
Public Works. Our Director, Arlen Travazas.
Thank you for that question, Mayor. The Slurry Seal program is based off of the relative maintenance of the streets, so it's based off of the PCI pavement condition index. So it's not necessarily all the streets. These are the ones that are in such high condition that we can just lay a coating over it to add another seven to 10 years of service life to the streets. So the worst streets will get milled and overlaid, which is grinding. And then laying blacktop on top of them. The slurry seal goes over the streets that are in better condition to add service life to them.
So we will be coming back to the city council with requests for general fund monies to do the grinding and all that.
Grinding and overlay, yes. Yes, ma'am, that will be, we'll award the bid 10-3.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
How many months you been here?
Six.
So, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I could segue on your comments to the Public Works Director. When it was presented to us, there were three categories. There is a category, I think it's before you were on board as the Public Works Director, if I recall correctly, there were the streets that were in fairly good condition that a slurry seal would get, seal would give them extra years of life. Then there were the streets that were in very poor condition that needed to be either ground or actually dug up and replaced the asphalt. And then there were the streets in between that didn't get the attention at first. So there's streets in between those two categories. Where do we stand with those? I think the mayor would agree with me. We want them, you know, repaired as well.
So so the approach that has been laid out to staff and the program that I've implemented in Public Works Department is, we're going to take the streets that are going to be milled and overlaid, which is add another layer of blacktop. That was part, this is part of the ordinance change that you all approved. So previously, what was happening was you were only able to, according to the ordinance, only cut off one inch of the street, which is really nothing, right? So we now go down two inches, which is regular maintenance in the industry. So what we're doing is we're taking PCI index number, I think it's 75. I don't have my notes in front of me, I'm sorry. You caught me a little off guard today.
It's okay.
But those are the streets that are going to be presented to you when we award the bid on 10-3. So when I came aboard, I was tasked with me, so you'll you'll get the rest of that on 10-3. So we're going to, the slurry is always going to happen because that extends the life of your streets. Mill and overlay are for those streets that are in need of repair, such as potholes. So we'll grind those up, lay another, a black, layer of blacktop on there, stripe it, and that should add another 15 to 20 years of life to the streets.
So let me ask you a technical question. Some streets are broken up, and the cracks are deep, much deeper than two or three inches, four inches. What happens when you grind the top, but it's still like, looks like rocks? It's all broken up, all broken up, and you put a layer over it? Is that really, as an engineer, is that a good idea to do it that way?
Well, if I'm understanding your question accurately, that would be what we call a lot of alligatoring due to how it looks. A lot of streets, when we get to that level, that will be in the CIP program.
Okay. Because, you know, fortunately, this year, we have over $100 million in reserves. And we are, of course, always, and I'm sure you're doing the seeking out grants from federal, state, other sources to do our street repairs. There are measures on the ballot to provide funds for streets. There's gas tax, and et cetera, et cetera. Utilizing all those and realizing that we have over $100 million in reserves, we should be able to fix our streets the right way for the long term. So I know you haven't been the Public Works Director that many months, but you're doing a great job so far. And I would just like to see that the work that's done, since we have the money, we do it right. That we that we spend the money, and I think my colleagues would agree, to do a very high quality resurfacing of the streets. Because, you know, slurry seal only works on certain streets that don't have those deep cracks, don't have the potholes. So another technical question, as a civil engineer, if you do find these streets that have some potholes, and then they also have this alligator look, basically deep cracks around rocks about the size of my, when I say rocks, pieces of asphalt, I should say, the size of my fist, maybe larger. When you grind it, do you pick all those up and remove them or bury them underneath the new layer of asphalt? What's what's typical? And what do you see being done in Carson?
Well, I thought City Manager was going to answer. Well, when we.
Because my neighbors are asking me this question. I wanted to answer.
Prior to me coming on board, there was a pavement management index done. That is the book that I'm using, that Public Works is using to conduct this, right? So the next step is to, was to change the ordinance so that we were able to establish a more robust maintenance program, instead of everything going through CIP. So with that robust maintenance program, you're able to have multiple vendors come in, mill and overlay. Now, the surface of the street does not necessarily dictate what needs to happen to that particular street. It is what the engineers have decided how bad the street is. So I don't don't necessarily get caught on what the street looks like because that doesn't necessarily dictate the work that needs to be done on that street.
Okay.
So it's all based off of what the what the engineers have gone out, created this book, and will use a certain percentage of the streets that we're going to use in order to mill and overlay. Some will still be slurry sealed, so all streets will not be milled and overlaid, as we call it. Some will still be slurry because they're still in good condition. It may not look like it just due to colorization or anything like that, but surface integrity of the street, they're still in pretty good shape.
Okay. Another question, how do you handle concrete streets when they're cracked or there are potholes?
All that's going to be taken into account. Concrete streets, regular, all of that is part of what we're doing. So that's the comprehensive, that was a whole idea of changing the ordinance. So we were able to attack these in a regular systematic and methodical way in order to maintain the streets.
So do you feel that the ordinance change is enough, or do we need to adjust the ordinance even further?
No, I think this is, we have to get started first. And.
See what happens?
All that's gonna be taken into account. Concrete streets, regular, all of that is part of what we're doing. So, that's the comprehensive, that was the whole idea of changing the ordinance, so we were able to attack these in a regular systematic and methodical way in order to maintain the streets.
So, do you feel that the ordinance change is enough, or do we need to adjust the ordinance even further?
No, I think this is, we have to get started first, and-
See what happens?
Six months, six months into it, we're moving in a good direction.
Great, okay, good, good news, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Councilman Deere, if I may also, just to add, the, I think your question was all the streets, or to ensure that there's some type of attention brought forward, and so, as Director Rogers was explaining, basically, the staff, as on October third, as he's mentioned, per Mayor and Council, that we are going to bring forward the RFP for these vendors that are going to handle all of your residential streets-
Right.
-based upon whatever the need is, and then move on to the main arterials of the street. So, the money, as you mentioned, in the reserve is to bring forward, ask for, through Mayor and Council, you all to approve the securing of this RFP, as well as ensuring that all streets are going to be taken care of. That is the main goal, and that's the task that Director Rogers and the Public Works team has been working on, and so that's what you and your residents will get to see, based upon your decisions come October third.
So, it's fair to say, October third, we'll have a presentation that'll make it very clear, and then, is it fair to say that we, as a council, the five of us, have moved forward with a direction to staff that all of the streets be looked at for improvement?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, all streets will be, again, and I don't want to misspeak as far as the term, but every street will be looked at to determine what needs to happen, whether it's milled or overlaid, whether it's slurry sealed, but as Director Rogers stated, based upon the engineer's assessment-
Yes.
-every street in the city, starting with residential first, will be maintained, and then, once all residential streets are completed, we will move to all the main arterial streets in the city.
I see.
So, every street in the city will be, in some form or fashion, maintained.
And every street will be addressed?
That's correct.
So, what we don't want is for some streets to fall through the cracks, no pun intended, but, you know, to be skipped or missed or something like that. Particularly, we have alleys that function as streets sometimes, they're highly trafficked alleys. I want to be sure that the alleys are included in the repairing of our, of our streets, our transportation, surface transportation, and that should be included, and if there's a, the only exception would be private streets, and not a public right of way, we're not dealing with those, but I want to be sure that we don't miss any streets or alleys. Can we be confident of that, Mr. City Manager?
Absolutely, we're confident that that is exactly the goal, that's been the marching orders that we've been given, and Director Rogers and his staff understand, and I believe they've been moving expeditiously to ensure that not only RFP, but then getting this project started, because we do have a timeline, we've given them a timeline as far as when we want this to get done. We understand, we have the World Cup and Olympics coming, and we want to make sure that the City of Carson is looking pristine by that point.
It will look great when all those streets are done, and the five of us are telling our constituents that we're gonna address the issues of all the streets, and it's great news to hear that that's confirmed.
Thank you. I want to inform my colleagues, and I've requested that our City Manager bring back a monthly report as to which streets have been dealt with, and my goal, and I, you know, I know staff is not out there, and I've also asked for project managers to be on board so that we will know what streets are actually being done, because I think, and I know staff is working on that, project managers for these, we have so many projects going on in the city, but to my colleagues, you will be getting a monthly report on which streets have been slurry sealed, or whatever you want to call it, and that will come to us. I want us to randomly, and I've asked for the addresses of the streets that have been slurry sealed or worked, so we can say that this council has moved in the direction of slurry sealing your street, are you satisfied? I can only speak for my block, and I'm not satisfied, but I do think that it's important for us to know, even with the tree trimming, the streets, that we can send a letter out to our residents, our constituents, say, we're moving in that direction. So, I know there was some concern about me getting the list. This letter, what we can send out can be signed by all of us, so that it's a joint effort that we're moving forward in these, or we can send out to your district, but for me, I want to send them out. When you send a list and say that the streets have been taken care of, I want to say, okay, are you satisfied? Because I've been getting some emails back that they were not satisfied, and so therefore you can go out, I think I sent it to you, a couple of them already, that they needed some attention, so I think, and once we get moving with the, all the contractors in place, we can back up and say, hey, but I think it's good for us as elected officials to say, hey, Madam so-and-so, your streets were slurry sealed on such and such a day, we want to let you know that we're moving forward, and are you satisfied or do you have any concerns? Will that report have, can you provide staff with that information, addresses, streets?
We're been directed to work on that, we are in the process of putting that together for you.
Okay.
But if I, if I may address a couple of things that you just mentioned, one is the slurry seal and the condition per our conversations via email. We've already had a meeting with the organization, we are in the process of getting those things taken care of. I've also reached out to them, and they're going to be making a presentation on the third-
Thank you.
-to address those things that you have, and also, a lot of things are moving, we have, we're going to be awarding bids, awarding contracts to un-called construction inspectors and project managers, so that when these things are going, there is no break in service or break in maintenance, and all those things are going to be moving forward all at the same time. So, there's a lot of things coming around, it's just taking a little bit of time to do the RFPs, gather that, do the surveys, and start putting these things in place, but they are coming. A lot of that will be coming at your next council meeting.
And I appreciate your six months because you guys are doing a lot, and I know I send a lot of emails out and say, I don't like this, but it's to let you know that some people are not telling you the full story, so I'll take a little picture and send it to you. So, I'm glad you're on top of this, and this is all a part of the beautification project that we have in place, I implemented, and it's going citywide. It's deferred, we've been doing without for twenty years. So, I appreciate all your effort and your six months, your due diligence, you guys, all of you have been working around the clock, but I do want to, just want to make it known to this City Council that you will be getting a report every month on the projects and the status. And thank you, Mr. Assistant City Manager, thank you, City Manager, thank you, Public Works Director, thank you, Tariq, thanks Deputy City, thanks to all of you guys, you're doing a fantastic job.
Mayor, one more thing, if I could add, also, along with not only just the pavement of the streets coming forward, we're working on that as well, but concrete, such as sidewalks, and that's going to be done in the same manner of what we're doing, the pavement, so all these things are in place, it just takes a little time to get all these things through the regular process of how Public Works-
I appreciate it, I can see the difference already, even with our medians, I see some, some movement. We don't look like, beginning to look like Carson, I know there's a lot more work to be done with the two contractors, because it was left unnoticed for such a long time, so I appreciate it, I appreciate the bark that you've put around, I noticed all that with the little flowers, I appreciate that.
Yes.
It's taken, being proactive and saying, until we get where we want to be, this is a bandaged approach, but it looks good.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I noticed.
I appreciate that.
Madam Mayor, you know, by fixing the sidewalks, it actually saves money, because it eliminates trip and fall lawsuits that we often pay money out on. Most importantly, it prevents one of our residents or a visitor from being injured. So, those, when they're brought to our attention, really need to be addressed. Like we said, we have the money, so let's fix all of our sidewalks, curbs, gutters, drainage issues, all those things can be addressed. I know it's a big task, but I know you're up to it.
Yes, sir.
And your staff and City Manager's staff is up to it.
Yes, sir.
You have great personnel in your department, and they know what they're doing, they work hard, I see they're dedicated to our community, and that makes us really happy. And to the City Manager, you know, I agree with the mayor that all five of our signatures should go out on these letters, because it's not just one of us getting the streets fixed, it's all five of us passing the ordinance, it's all five of us wanting the same results for our residents. So, I'd like to be sure that our signatures go on, on these letters that go out to the public, so they're not under some misinterpretation or some false impression. Thank you.
And I, Ross, Mr. City Manager, thank you, but you can go back to his presentation.
Thank you, Director Rogers. So, moving on to the slide here, this is just a map of the City of Carson and the Slurry Seal Project for the public to see. The blue line shows the streets that are being completed, and the red shows work yet to be done. So, for this project, two point one million was earmarked for the tile munis upgrade. The tile munis upgrade has been completed, tile munis for our resident businesses to know is our financial system, we're now on the current version, we've been migrated to the cloud now. However, the enterprise permitting and licensing project is still ongoing. The projected time for completion at the latest is September twenty twenty four. Community Services have been awarded seven hundred fifty-eight thousand of ARPA money for non-capital purchases. You see the chart there of all the purchases that are made year to date, they spent down ninety thousand dollars. However, I believe this evening, Community Services are procuring furniture with the use of ARPA funds for two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and a ninety kilowatt generator for a hundred one thousand dollars of ARPA funds. So, I believe that's on this evening's agenda. Right now, regarding the two hundred fifty thousand earmarked for broadband, we have secured a contract with Magellan Advisors, who's assessing our broadband capabilities within our city. Three hundred fifty thousand dollars for Wi-Fi at the parks. There have been three parks that have been, now have Wi-Fi capabilities, Mills Park, Carson Park, Veterans Park. Right now, Forcia Park is in progress of getting Wi-Fi installed, and I believe this project will be completed, according to staff, at the end of December. Three hundred thirty, three hundred thirty thousand of ARPA has been earmarked for the emergency operations center upgrade. Currently, right now, we have consulted Architect to finalize plans for electrical, mechanical, and a construction bid package is in the works. And regarding our small business grant program, I'd like to segue to our Finance Director, Mr. William Jefferson, to go over this program. Will?
Thank you, Ross, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. The City of Carson has developed a small business grant program, which is designed to contribute to the overall economic health of the city. The program features grants with up to twenty-five thousand to assist businesses in the City of Carson based on specific guidelines. Now, Slide eleven, it shows that we had a hundred and twenty-seven applicants that have applied for the small business grant loan. Out of their one twenty-seven, forty-six have been approved, totaling an amount of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, and this is just as a FY twenty-two, twenty-three, fourth quarter.
Staff, Mr. City Manager, and I can, because my concern with pulling this item is to make sure, I discussed at the last meeting, I wanted to know how much money we had spent, and how many of our businesses that had applied for the small business loans that had been approved, and how many do we have? Do we have enough money to make sure that all of our businesses that have been hurting receive some, the twenty-five thousand dollars? And my understanding is that we have a list of X number, and I wanted this council to consider us increasing this fund so that everybody that qualifies will at least be able to say that we assisted them. There were quite a few, that's what I pulled this item for. So, without, I know you say you have forty-six applicants that have been approved, some of them won't qualify, how many are on the waiting list right now?
Yes, ma'am, that's going to be presented on my next slide.
Okay, so, while he's presenting to my colleagues, I'd like you to consider how we can divert some of this money, take some of the funding out of our general fund, if necessary, to make sure that our small businesses that are hurting have, were able to receive this twenty-five thousand.
Is that a motion, Madam Mayor?
Oh, you want me to make the motion?
Yes, I mean, I'm willing to second it, I'm running into business people who are, who are hurting, they're strapped, and they're struggling. The economy is slowly pacing, gas is almost seven dollars a gallon, I mean, things are happening, so if that's a motion, or if not, if you want me to make it a motion-
If it's a motion, we can move it in, because I understand the presentation, but that was the purpose of me pulling this item, so that we can give those agencies, those small businesses, to come some assistance, and if it means that we have to take some money from a project and move, and pay for a particular project with general fund money, I think we should do that.
Second.
Madam Mayor, under discussion of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, maybe the staff could let us know how much funding's available in ARPA that might be not utilized in what we originally laid it out for, and transfer that to the small business grant program, and then, as the mayor mentioned, supplement it with general fund money, because as we said earlier tonight, we have over a hundred million dollars in reserves, probably, I haven't looked at all the statistics, but, you know, we're probably better off than any other city in the South Bay with our reserves, and, you know, right? And that makes us a jewel, when you think about that, that's a-
Finally.
So, if I can make a friendly amendment, could this, the staff give us a dollar figure, and then we could put it on the agenda-
It doesn't need to be a friendly amendment, it doesn't need to be, because he's getting ready to tell us, we don't need to amend the motion, we're just gonna do it, how many do, how much do you need? I think it was ninety-
Nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand dollars. Okay, so it doesn't need to be a friendly amendment, but he said we're gonna fund them regardless of what it costs. Keep going.
So, under, oh, so, you want to vote on that motion, or you want to wait until he gives his presentation?
Finished, I just want to know the numbers and the cost, that's what we need, because I know my colleagues have to leave-
Okay.
-without rushing your presentation, but my councilwoman has to leave, and I know she wants to vote on this.
No problem. So, we have seventy-five businesses that have applied thus far.
Mm-hmm.
Based on our estimations, about seventy percent of those, seventy-five, will be approved. So, there would be fifty-two small businesses that will probably be approved at the twenty-five thousand dollar rate, which would be one point three million. We have four hundred thousand right now in our small business account. We're recommending nine hundred thousand. Four hundred thousand plus the nine hundred thousand would be one point three million. That would be able to make the fund whole, and to help us, help the businesses that are struggling and need to be made whole. I think it's a win-win situation, because that allowed them to be, the business to be whole, economic growth will transpire, that's with the businesses, then, of course, with the city, that's potential revenue, more revenue, then also off of that, now with that additional revenue, things that you guys just discussed, such as tree cutting, road improvement, pavements, now you have extra funding to help do that. So, I think it's a win-win situation, the citizens win, the city win, and-
So, you need one point three million dollars for, so how much, you have four?
Four hundred thousand, we're asking for nine hundred thousand.
Okay, so that's my motion.
Second.
And it's been moved improperly, second?
Okay, under discussion of the motion?
Yes.
So, could you redefine how much of that nine hundred thousand request is ARPA money, and how much is general fund money?
So, all, the nine hundred thousand would be ARPA, would be ARPA money.
All of it.
All of it. What we are now asking in return is that we get the nine hundred thousand from the general fund reserve to now take place of the projects that have been stripped to be allocated to the small business programs.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Yeah, so the, all the projects will go, we're just gonna fund the small business through the ARPA, and then we're gonna go through the general fund, everything is gonna take place.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
All right, so my next question would be, could the program use more than nine hundred thousand? Is that feasible?
At the current rate, we don't know now with the statistics that we have, keep in mind, I- mind, we have 75 applicants. 70% of them by data will probably be approved.
Right.
So, with those 70%, that gives us 52 businesses that are potentially able to get approved.
Right. That's the 900,000?
Then you multiply that by the 25,000, which is the rate that we're given for the small business loan grant. That gives you a total of 1.3 million.
Okay, so some of them might not be funded at 25,000, but on the other hand, there may be additional applicants coming in. So, if my colleagues would agree...
We've asked that they bring it back if it wasn't enough. That was the direction to staff. If it's not enough, bring it back and let us know. What we want to do now is move on this. They have direction to bring it back to us if more businesses need approval. We're going to help our small businesses. It's the bottom line. So, what, we have a motion on the floor and second, so let's go vote.
It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Bring back if you need additional money. Don't be bashful. And then let us know the projects that you're going to fund out of the general fund, so we can move forward on those also.
Madam Mayor, I have one more thing. I would like to present a budget resolution for the reallocation of 900,000 onto the floor.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney, is this all appropriate? Have you seen it?
I'm trying to check to see if a version of it was at least on the agenda.
Okay. We can move to, while we're waiting on that. Thank you, staff. Thank you for the presentation. It's good to know that you already have this, but we need to help our small businesses.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, it has to come back.
It has to come back. That item has to come back. Okay. At the next council meeting, we'll have it on the agenda. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a special order day, item number 33. Madam City Clerk, was this item properly posted and noticed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, the notice of public hearing has been given pursuant to applicable law, including but not limited to proof of timely publication received by my office. The posting requirements were met for the individuals and the organizations. The posting affidavits are on file in the City Clerk's office, and we did not receive any written communication for this item.
Staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll have our Assistant City Manager of Administrative Services, Dr. Robert Lennox, to provide a brief presentation.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Very briefly, just each year, prior to the start of the Community Development Block Grant Program year, the city submits an annual action plan. It's, as part of its application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, for CBPG funding. The following conclusion of the program year, the city is required to submit to HUD a summary report on its performance against that annual action plan. That report is also called the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, known as the CAEPER. It's due to HUD not less than 90 days following the close of the program year. HUD regulations require a public hearing on the draft CAEPER prior to submission of the final report. Prior to the elimination of the Citywide Advisory Commission, the CAEPER public hearing had been conducted by that commission, but that, with that commission having been eliminated two years ago, this hearing is being conducted by the City Council. The draft CAEPER report is attached to the staff report as part of the agenda tonight. Certainly have staff here to answer any questions you may have, but that concludes my report. And so before you is the public hearing and then proposed direction from council to move forward with finalizing that report and submitting it to HUD at your discretion.
Is there any questions for my colleagues? Hearing none? Public hearing? Does anyone want to speak on this item? Or should you go? He's okay? Okay. We're opening the public hearing. You don't have any public hearing? Any comments? We're going to close the public comments. Counsel, deliberation?
I just, I support the staff's recommendations.
A motion? Is that a motion?
Make a motion, sure.
Second. Staff's recommendation.
Been moved and properly seconded, all in paper. Cash your vote. It's item number...
I don't think the voting is working.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 It's good?
Hope we got it working. It's faster. There we go.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number 34, consider adopting Resolution Number 23152, establishing the salary and benefits for unclassified management employees effective November 1st, 2022. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Assistant City Manager, Dr. Robert Lennox, for Administrative Services, will also provide a brief presentation for this discussion item.
Thank you, City Manager, and thank you again, counsel. This item is a cleanup item addressing the unclassified management employees, essentially their resolution establishing their salaries and benefits. This came before you some months ago, however, there were some minor errors in that resolution, so this is being brought back to clean those up. They include attaching the previously approved salary table to the resolution, so no changes in salaries, and then also right sighting some of the benefits and accrual leaves that were left out of the previous resolution. So, there's no fiscal impact related to this. It's just making sure that what is on record reflects what is already being provided to those level of employees.
What, we already approved?
Correct. I do want to highlight the reason why this is on discussion is pursuant to Government Code 65953, Section C3. Prior to taking any final action, the legislative body shall orally report a summary of a recommendation for final action on the salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of a local agency executive during the open meeting in which the final action is to be taken. So, in essence, it has to be done orally, and that's why it's on discussion.
I was wondering.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I will move that we adopt Resolution Number 23-152, a resolution of the City Council, the city of Carson, California, establishing the salary and benefits for unclassified management employees effective November 1st, 2022, and rescinding Resolution Number 23-037.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? Cash your vote. I need a job. Item number 36, consider a grant agreement with the National Trust for Historic Preservation in the amount of $150,000 for the production of a historic structure report for Carson City Hall. Staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item will be presented by our Assistant City Manager of Economic Development, John Raymond.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item before you is actually a grant agreement with the National Trust for Historic Preservation in the amount, as you mentioned, of 150,000. Last fall, we received an email from the National Trust inviting us to apply for grant for City Hall under their Conserving Black Modernism Program. That's a relatively new program under the African-American Cultural Heritage Action Fund Grant Program. That's a mouthful, but it's a program that they've been, that they've been running for a number of years. The process was that we had to send a letter of intent into the National Trust by, by the middle of December. And then the, if we were successful with the letter of intent, we were then invited to apply for the actual grant application, which was due on April 7th. And then the grant itself, we received the award notification, I think, at the, at the end of June. There was, the National Trust received about 600 letters of interest under this program this year, and I think they awarded something like 26. They made 26 awards under this program. So, this is a really very prestigious. The reason Carson was invited is that this building, the architecture team that designed this building in the 1970s was led by an African-American architect, Robert Kennard, who's actually a significant mid-century modern architect, late modernist, but mid-century modern architect in Los Angeles. He had, he had over 700 commissions during his career in Los Angeles County and elsewhere in Southern California and San Diego. And so, and, and of the eight awards that they made this year, the National Trust, under the Conserving Black Modernism Program, two of them were for Robert Kennard buildings, this building and four, and one other building. So, there's a focus on, on, on the architect in particular and, and the significance, and that was the entree in there. What the grant allows us to do, we're, we're using it to do what's called a historic structure report. And we've already done the RFP and gone through the process of selecting the, the architecture firm, but we didn't have the contract quite ready for, for this agenda. That'll be on, I'm not here at the next meeting, so it'll be on October 17th. But the historic structure report does two things. One is that it looks at the historic context, the architecture, you know, what the architect has done, what the elements of the building are, and, and all that. There's a whole historic aspect to it. But the other is actually looking at the structure itself, and they look at it structurally, you know, the, the firm that we've selected, you know, they've got structural engineers part of the team. They've got kind of exterior envelope and waterproofing experts as part of the team, architectural, architectural historians and materials experts and, and things like that. And we'll get a report that can be the guidebook for the preservation of the building, conservation of the building going forward. Not just historic preservation, like saving the wood, that sort of thing, but how to treat, you know, waterproofing issues, how to treat, you know, exterior things, the potential, you know, any potential seismic issues and that sort of stuff. So, it's a good way to get that sort of study on the building paid for by a grant. And so, so this, this agreement is actually just the grant agreement with the National Trust. And like I said, on October 17th, we'll come back to you with the, the contract with Architectural Resources Group, which is a firm that we've made the selection of for the, for the, for the actual historic structure report. It's about a nine-month project, which means that we will have it early, early next summer, and we'd come back and make a presentation at that time of what the findings are. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
MPT has a question.
I'm ready to move forward, but I just want to ask one question. If we receive these funds, will it later prevent us doing updates to City Hall, or say that we want to modernize City Hall? Would it prevent us?
Outside structure, I think.
From doing any modern work to City Hall?
No, so it's, it's, it's not, it's not a designation. And even if you were designated, you can still do, you know, I mean, you can still modernize, and you can still make changes to the building. The National Trust is obviously interested in the preservation of the structure and all that, but they're really granting, they're really granting the, the funds for the city itself to sort of investigate the history and understand the building and, and that sort of thing. A big part of, a big part of what this is about is really a, a public education program that educate the public on modernism, what modernism is, what black modernism in Southern California is, and the significance of that. And, and, and then, you know, and then this building and, and this sort of relationship of that there. It'll, it'll, you'll have a guidebook. Maybe it's not a guidebook, but it's sort of a manual of what, an inventory of what's in the building, best practices for conserving. You could still decide that, you know, you want to take the teak and you, you want to paint it white, because you want, you know, you can still do that. And there's no, there's no undesignation, because you're not designated. And, and so, it's really, it's really, it's really a benefit for the community and the council and the, and staff to really sort of learn about the building. And then you can, you know, essentially do what you want with the information.
Yeah, it's a lot of information that I didn't know. Anyway, you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve a grant agreement with the National Trust for their historical preservation under its Conserving Black Modernism Program in the amount of $150,000.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, under discussion. I think the maker of the motion wants to accept this as a friendly amendment, that has authorized the mayor to sign the agreement and all related documents.
Abs, absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jimmy, I appreciate it. Authorize the mayor to sign the agreement and all related documents.
And I'll second the friendly amendment.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Please cash your vote.
It's 4-0. We have one absence, Madam Mayor. Sorry.
Item number 37 is consideration for locally uncontested appointments with all the commissions set planning, development, environmental. That's put on by me. I have one person on the Public Works Commission. I'd like to move Mary Martin from Altar Number Three to the vacant position on Public Works.
We did that.
I'll move that we ratified the appointment.
In the last meeting, you authorized it.
It shows vacant on my sheet. I mean, it shows him still as the third.
So, remember, I emailed you and I told you. Yes.
Oh, so he's already been sworn in?
Well, he's been notified. He hasn't come in yet, but he has, he has been notified.
Oh, okay. So, this is the revised?
Yes. So, as in the email that I shared with you, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
We made the updates in accordance to, after we met with the staff. So, as I shared the, whatever you call this, the CCB list, that's in your staff report, does not reflect. I didn't want to make any date changes until after we had already made those.
Okay, so he's already been appointed by myself.
He has been notified via mail, as have all of the ones who were serving on an expired term or in the process. It's, it's like 80 people, but all of them are in the process of being contacted via letter from the clerk's office.
Okay.
We did, as I mentioned to you last week, hold the meeting with all of the staff, whose staff commissions. That was this afternoon, and I believe we're all on the same page moving forward. We had our purchasing manager go over the protocol and the policy on ordering business cards for all of them. So, everyone has been informed. I think it was a great meeting, if I say so myself. It was my meeting, and I think it went well. And so, and there were no questions. So, a sign of a great meeting is no questions at the end. So, we did go over everything. There was a lot of feedback from those who did have certain policy or procedural questions or concerns throughout. So, I believe everyone's on the same page. We had about 38 people in attendance at the meeting today.
Awesome.
So, we're, we're moving forward, right behind you.
They all heard the same thing at the same time.
They all heard the same thing at the same time.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll have business cards and everything. Thank you so much for taking care of that.
You are so welcome. I have updated revised lists for all of you, if and when you're ready, but I can also send them out electronically, but I did.
Let me have a hard copy.
We're ready right now.
Yeah, well, there you go, because I ran downstairs just, just for the question.
To our City Attorney, we have not held a Brown Axe violation meeting for all of these commissioners. I know we were in COVID when many of them were appointed. Is that something, Mr. City Manager, that we should be doing?
Sure. I mean, that's a...
Training.
Yeah, training. We could provide that.
Yeah, please. Set that up so we can, because you have a lot of new commissioners and...
Yes, ma'am. We could use, we have probably Ben Jones or...
Okay, sounds good. I think that concludes. Oh, all communications for non-agendized items. Any all communications, Madam?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have seven public comment cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Bevel? Yes, he's coming.
Claudia.
How are you doing, Mr. Davis? Senator, please. I haven't said nothing yet.
Nice to see you again, Mr. Bevel. You have three minutes.
Before you start the three minutes, let me say this to you. The council lady, I mean, the mayor, Davis, she made a comment, and it hurt my feelings.
I did?
Because my responsibility is to let the ladies know that they're beautiful. That is my responsibility. So I want to know.
Oh, excuse me.
You hurt my feelings. Just to let you know. That is my job.
I'm waiting.
So ladies, you are beautiful and remain beautiful only for me, because I'm selfish. Okay? Now, we can start the three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Thank you very much. Cedric, please. The reason I'm here, because the, the trust fund, the employee trust fund, the language changed in two thousand seventeen in regards to the fund for the future, benefits for the future retirees and so forth. It changed to the point now it's voluntary and it's optional and so forth. And the last pre-funding contribution was made in June twenty seventeen in regards to the City Carson Trust Fund for employees' future retirement benefits so far. So I want to know whether the trust fund is in place or disappear or doesn't exist anymore.
To staff, trust fund?
City Carson Participation in the California Employee Benefit Trust Fund.
Sorry, excuse me. The microphone's a little sensitive here. To answer your question, sir, I'll have to get a little more specific as far as the trust fund. We have, there's, we have a myriad of trust funds that are provided for employees, whether it be the Cal-Purs Retirement System. There could be a four fifty-seven, which is.
Well, this is through Cal-Purs. It was, the city joined this trust fund in May twenty twelve.
May twenty twelve, okay.
Right. And what concerned me, the language changed five years later, twenty seventeen in regards to now voluntary discretion, and you don't have to pay into the trust fund. So I'm like, whatever, what's going? Is the trust fund still exists or disappear?
Right. Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have disappeared if it would have. I assume you have that you'd have been contacted. But let me do this for you, because I don't want to misrepresent and give you wrong information. If I could just maybe get your contact information, we'll do the research and I'll get back to you so we can ensure you get that answer.
Wait, I want you to memorize this. The last pre-funding contribution was made in June twenty seventeen, but it says at the bottom, as far as August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, the City Carson's current on health contributions to keep me young.
So, so the current health contributions is separate, for sure, and that's your medical health contribution. So that's, that's one aspect. But the trust fund is something different, so.
This, this is something different, but I, I wanted to know, based on the change of the language of the trust fund, I wanted to know, does it still exist or disappear?
Right. And I'll have to, and I'm going to have to research it, because at this point, to my understanding, there isn't a trust fund that staff is utilizing or participating in. But I'm going to have to research that just to ensure, for the one that you're making reference to, because I'm not familiar with that language.
Mr. City Manager, can I suggest, Claudia, because we don't have it on the agenda, that you step aside and get his information, and then he will be getting in contact. Oh, you have it on there? Everything is on there?
Yeah, everything's.
So we.
Can I have it?
I think that's my home number. Yo, have my cell number.
No, I, I don't.
No, I can write it down now.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so someone will be.
Write it down. I mean, you know.
Sure.
I'm sorry, you know, it's a, it's a Latino thing, you know.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, Claudia, so, and we're going to get back to Memorial and German, but I did skip over that. Who else? Anyone else? Six more comments?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Claudia. Robert Dominguez?
Thank you for the time, you know, talked to the gentleman.
Can I get his notes too?
See you guys later.
His notes? Oh.
Monica, you're still beautiful.
Mr. Dominguez? How are you, sir? You'll have three minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Hi, my name is Robert Dominguez. My name is Robert Dominguez. I'm here to speak to the graffiti issue here in Carson that is going out of control. I would like to thank the, the city leadership for recently painting over the large graffiti on the highway wall along the four or five South Freeway, just behind the CHP Waystation. I would only ask that you remain diligent on this issue and paint a couple of more times over the next few weeks. It's my experience that tigers move along somewhere else after they work, is painted over a couple of times. I would also like to offer a suggestion. Maybe it will be helpful to make this a code enforcement, a code enforcement issue, and encourage the property owners to paint over large graffiti areas on their own property or face citations. The area along the four or five South Freeway at Wilmington Avenue off-ramp will be a great example of this. I believe there is a car dealership and a RV dealership, and a few others that need to be encouraged to paint their back of their own business that face the freeway again. In this area along the four or five south from the Wilmington Avenue off-ramp to Lamita, those businesses should be required to paint over their graffiti, their walls. It's an eyesore to the entire community, to the entire community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for noticing, Mr. Dominguez, because we, that has been an area, they've painted it three times, but I feel exactly what you're saying. Our city never had this graffiti before.
Yeah.
There's something going on, and we do have a graffiti abatement program, and we will take your suggestions to heart, because it's just gotten worse. And I think that wall, I mentioned it to.
Especially the one on the freeways.
The one on the freeway is terrible. Then you travel further up, gets toward, I think, before you get to Supple, there's an entire wall.
Yes.
That's been graffiti, and that's Cal Trans wall, so.
And the problem is that you guys paint it, and then they go over and paint it again, you know.
We're going to be diligent, and I, my, the city manager and his staff has contacted Carol Trans to get them involved.
Thank you very much.
We're very aware of it. It's an eyesore, and we have to stay on top of it. But I'm seeing graffiti, graffiti that I've never seen in this city before.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, and keep coming back.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Veronica Guerra? Hi, Veronica, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Veronica, and I'm here tonight to speak on the issue regarding the city being considered as a finalist for the Business Friendly City Award by LAEDC. I believe that the city should work closely with the business community to create jobs and economic development. In the past, the city has not always created a business-friendly environment. I believe the community will appreciate the city leadership working with the business community and not working against business with burn someone regulations. The community understands that thriving business community creates jobs and economic opportunities. Many in the communities have seen many of the city's leadership work to the forms beneficial partnership with the business community. I believe council member Jim Beer has a track record of working with our business community to benefit our local economy. I would like to encourage the entire city leadership to follow the example of the council's member, Jim Beer, in partnering with the other, with our business community for the benefit of our city. If the city leadership as a whole join creating a friendly environment for business, I have no doubt that our community will be benefit from economically and work worthy of, I want to work.
Thank you so much for that report.
Thank you so much.
Did you, did you see our economic development plan? I know you were here.
Yes.
We're moving in the right direction.
Work.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you for that report, that letter. Thank you. Who's next?
Yes, Major Tim Smith. Good evening, Major. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mayor Davis Holmes and members of the council, it's a privilege to be able to speak to you tonight. I am Major Tim Smith. I'm the new Corps Officer and Pastor of the Salvation Army located in Torrance, but which serves not just Torrance, but the entire South Bay area, including the city of Carson. You may know our Stillman Sawyer Family Services Center located at Lamita and the one-ten. I think that's just outside the city limits of Carson. But that's the place where we provide food boxes for families in need, ready-to-eat food bags for the unsheltered, hygiene products, a Thanksgiving meal, Christmas gift for children from low-income families, and free vocational training in the heating and air conditioning industry. And those services are all available to people across the South Bay. You may also know that the Salvation Army's regional headquarters that oversees and resources all the work in Southern California is located right here in Carson. So we are part of the community, and we're grateful to be here and to serve. And tonight, I'm not here with a big ask. I'm actually here with a big opportunity. I'm looking for your help in offering a once-in-a-lifetime experience to young people across the South Bay. Now, we are recognized for our many social service programs, but we also have many music and mentoring programs for youth. And we are putting on an event called Share Your Voice. And Share Your Voice is a vocal competition, kind of like The Voice or America's Got Talent. But it's not about turning kids into pop stars. It's about giving kids a chance, a chance to share their story and their emotion and their talent, their energy and their heart through music, to show them that they can encourage other people to reach for the stars. And it's an opportunity for them to be coached and mentored so they can maximize their own potential. And what we're looking for is, we're looking to identify some kids who are in junior high and high school who would be a good fit for this kind of an experience. Right now, you probably yourselves know a young person or two who likes to sing and has a great voice, or you know, a music teacher or somebody else who's plugged in to some of the great kids in our community. And we want to connect with them. We want to get them involved in Share Your Voice, because this is going to be a big-time opportunity. The finalists are going to win a prize package that includes their own laptop and recording equipment, as well as a chance to record an original song in our studio. It's going to be a great chance to spread their wings, and best of all, it's not hard to do. All they have to do is record a thirty-second video of themselves singing into their phone and upload that to our website, which is ShareYourVoiceSA, as in Salvation Army, ShareYourVoiceSA.com. And winners of that entry audition will receive in-person coaching and be selected for the next round and participate in a big public finale and show on November ninth. The catch is that the deadline is this Sunday, September twenty-fourth. So what we'd like to ask you to do is to think about those one or two young people that you know and call them up and say, hey, you should do this. You've got what it takes. Sign up and sign up right now. We feel like we've got a great winner that can do a lot to encourage young people in our community. And so I just ask that you would share the chance for young people to share their voice right now this week.
Thank you. We have an enrichment program with singers and everything, so Robert Lennox, Assistant City Manager, Mike Whitaker, he was around here. I'm sure they could send one or two people over to participate.
I have some flyers.
Yeah, it's always helpful. And leave your information here, because I do want to be speaking with you.
Great.
Yeah, for, yeah, for the youth conference, for the number of things that we're doing. Okay?
Very much. We see you coming.
Thank you.
Sir, are you also a singer? You sing yourself? You have quite a projection on your voice.
I do. I'm a preacher too, so.
You're a preacher? Oh, man. Okay. So thank you for being patient and, and, and sitting through our meeting. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Moving right along, Madam Mayor.
Did he leave a business card?
Yes, yes.
I need one.
Give it to Dr. Lennox. Daisy Valdez?
You don't know.
Hi, Daisy. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor.
How are you?
City council members. My name is Daisy Valdez. I'm a master's in public health student, and I wanted to raise three points and comments. One is, I don't know if you already are aware of the Childhood Obesity Prevention, Environmental Health and Sustainability Awards. It is through the National Council of Mayors, and it is an opportunity. So I bring money as an opportunity. It is a grant. Thank you. It is a grant that we, as a city, can apply for to help bring projects to life that would help improve the health of our community and improve economic development, which is something that we've been talking about all evening. Specifically, some ideas is improving access to food, healthy food in our community. We have seen increases in number and percentage of obesity and overweight in our community, unfortunately. And one way we can do this is by improving access to healthy food. The farmer's market, the only farmer's market, well, is on Tuesday after, Thursday's afternoons during work time, work hours, right? So my proposition is to allow that market to be more accessible to our working community and students, bringing it to life in the evenings, on a weekend, as an opportunity. Secondly, in terms of the development and economic development, mentioned earlier about the links, I want to keep in mind that green spaces are essential for not just economic development, but for our mental health and for the health of all of us. So making sure that we are preserving those green spaces where possible. Like was mentioned, we are one of the few communities that have land that is undeveloped. So how can we revitalize that land so that it is environmentally and economically sustainable for the community and bringing health to us all? Okay. And, and, yeah, any questions?
Well, thank you for that wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Lennox heard everything you said about the grant. This is Mr. Lennox right here. He's Assistant City Manager, and he will reach out to you about the grants and, and continue this conversation.
Of course. Thank you very much.
Robert Lennox.
Okay, we're moving right along. June?
I was about to say good morning, but good evening, everyone, council members, Mayor Protem, Madam Mayor, council, city staff, city clerk, and city treasurer, city manager. June Agrippa here with the State Assembly Member, Mike Gibson. And of course, what I just passed to you today are flyers. And of course, we want to let you know that the Assembly Member is doing an event, a Blush event. And of course, the Blush stands for Building Leaders and Uplifting Sisterhood. It's, it is a Young Woman's Leadership Conference. And of course, this is a free conference open to female high school and college students that will take place October seventh from nine to three at Cal State Dominguez Hills. And of course, what to expect from that conference, the young woman will be, of course, beginning to know the panels. There will be panels of, for career, networking class, sisterhood presentation, and of course, workshops such as financial literacy, physical and mental health, and self-defense, and many more. And of course, to register for this event, they can go to the Assembly Member's website, a six-five dot A S M D C dot org, or to the Assembly Member's Instagram. And of course, deadline to register is, I'm sorry, September twenty-fifth. And with that, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I conclude my message. And I would probably steal the line from our beloved Mayor Protem, but no, I won't.
And, and let the Assembly Member know that he should have partnered with me, because we're having our own conference on the twentieth. The Jazz Festival's on the seventh, but we added a young woman's portion this year, so I'd like to talk to you guys about partnering instead of us.
Same, same month, right?
It's same month, two weeks apart. So I always have the third Friday in October, so, instead of us. And Cal State Dominguez Hills is totally involved.
Yeah.
Okay, so in the future, for the next year, let's talk about. let's talk about us doing a partnership.
Oh, yeah, definitely. And of course, this year, we're actually partnering with the LUSD Director, Board Member, Tanya Ortiz Franklin. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, June.
Okay, last but not least, as requested, Kim Cortado. You were last.
While Kim is coming, Mr. City Manager, you did hear about all our graffiti. I know you got, okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council staff, Kim Cortado, Parks and Recreation Commissioner. Just want to highlight the White Linen Event that we just had on September 9th. I do apologize I didn't go. It was my husband's birthday. I got to give him one day a year. I mean, you know, I guess the birthday was just one. We also did Heroes Day, which was on, held on September 11th. Both events were great, even though I did miss the White Linen. I could hear it from my house, so it sounded great. Pictures I saw on Facebook, so everything looked great. The music was, sounded great from my house. Upcoming is the Mariachi Fiesta, which will be this Friday at the Event Center. Tickets are sold out for that. So if you were trying to go, unfortunately, you cannot go because there are no more tickets. October 7th will be the Jazz Festival at Anderson Park from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There are VIP tickets available. If you would like to contact Anderson Park regarding tickets. Upcoming, as the mayor said, is the Women's Health Conference, which will be held on October 20th. Tickets are still on sale for that at the Carson Event Center. We also have Friday Night at the Fights, which is a Fabelo Chavez Boxing, which will be October 27th at the Event Center from 5:00 to 11:00. And I believe tickets are still available for that. Switching hats now to my day job for the YMCA Senior Nutrition Program, starting October 25th, which I think is a, nope, 27th, sorry, 25th, city's closed. October 27th, Grab and Go will be coming back for our seniors who would like to do the drive-up. Once a week, they can pick up seven frozen meals, seven fruits, seven bread, and seven milk. That's one nutritious meal per day that we provide that will be coming back on October 27th for the seniors. If you would like to sign up for that, you can come down to the Community Center. We do have intake forms to fill out for that. And as always, we do hot meals five days a week at the Community Center. With that, lunch starting at 11:30, check in at 11 o'clock. And with that, I am complete. Have a great night.
Madam Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Maisha, tell her that's okay. I'll verbalize. Tell her that's okay. It'll take too long.
Memorial Germents?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there were two names provided. Anna Moore, Annette Crawford.
Can I add Reverend Ronald Lewis? He's the brother of our Carson resident Pastor Prentice Lewis. Ronald, Reverend Ronald Lewis, brother of Prentice Lewis, Pastor Prentice.
Okay, thank you. Any other names?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Father, tonight, we stretch our hands to you, no other help we know. We pray that you would bless these bereaved families in our city. We pray that you would encourage their families, encourage, strengthen their hearts. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay. Council request to add items to the agenda. I'm going to request that the city manager add the Maui Benefit. And the councilwoman wants to run a lead on that project. I'll assist her. So we need to talk about that. I don't know if we voted on it, but we, we did? Okay, for an update. And then also, there was a request to consider the Miss Carson Scholarship Award. And we want to see if the council is, wants to do that. We'll add those two to the agenda. And Maisha, you can come to the mic because we don't have flyers to discuss the Jazz Festival and do an oral presentation. She's been working around the clock. But our Jazz Festival is October 7th. You can just do the Women's Conference. The Jazz Festival is October 7th at Anderson Park. VIP tickets are still available. They're $100 per person for the VIP seating upon a canopy. Jameson Ross is our headliner. We have a violinist coming out. And of course, we have our usual that the ladies seem to love. What's his name?
Jameson Ross?
No, Jameson Ross and...
Jordan Boucha, C-S-U-D-H.
Band and Jazz in Pink. What's my guy's name?
Oh, Greg Rose, yeah.
Thank you. I knew the ladies would know. Greg Rose. So we're going to have a day in the park. And then Maisha, give us an update on our Women's Conference.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. We have a Women's Conference coming up on October 20th where we have two keynote speakers, our own, very own Sunny Soltano and Dr. Gloria Mauro. The conference starts at 8:00 a.m. in the morning till 3:00 p.m. at night. I mean, in the afternoon, sorry. We also have another portion added to that, which is the Young Adult portion, where we have Yo-Yo, the emcee, as an emcee, and a variation of different topics. We have vendor booths going on. And the cost is $55 up until the first of October, when it goes to $65.
And we have how many registered already?
Right now, we have about 117 registered.
Pre-registration?
Pre-registration. So if you would like to register, you can go to CarsonCA.gov, click the link on our website, and just follow all the information.
Thank you. The conference, each one of the sessions, I think we have eight sessions, six panelists. So many doctors have called to be a part of this conference. So we have two doctors per session that will be speaking on matters that affect women. This is, "It's All About Me Ladies," Women's Health Conference. This is our ninth one this year. And we have two speakers, our city attorney and another...
Dr. Gloria Mauro.
Dr. Gloria Mauro, who's a leading, everybody should know her. But anyway, so register online. Goodie bags, our pink bags and shirts. But it's "All About Me," and it's all about issues that affect us as women, health, child. And that's why I only have medical doctors to come out. I didn't want to have the ones that thought they were doctors didn't pass the bar. But you need to hear from a medical professional when you're talking about issues that affect us. The Heroes Day was great, I must say, was well-attended. I'm glad we combined those two events. I think we can get more bang for our buck if we combine these two events. The staff has been working around the clock. The Country Western was very, it was a good event also, even though it rained that evening, they showed up. And it's just, I'm really pleased that we can afford to put these events back in place for our residents because that's what they were missing, just coming out into the parks. Parks are for people, as Nate Riddick used to say. So thank you, Mr. Robert Lennox and all the staff involved. Everyone is involved, these special events, from purchasing to the city managers, to all of our deputies, our field reps, our city treasurer. She gets involved because she writes the checks. And our city clerk. So it was just, it's a team effort. And so I just want to thank everyone. I know we've been doing a lot. This was our anniversary. And I did ask staff to come back and list all of our events and see which ones we can merge. And because if you have an event that's only drawing 500 people, that's not a major special event. But we're putting in major time and major money. So we need to really look at what we can merge, some we can and some we can't, because they have been here forever. But I do think that we could merge like we did the Heroes Day and 9/11. And that event showed that by merging the two, you'll get more participation than... Because the 9/11 would normally only draw about 25 to 50 people. And then the Heroes Day was small also. So this year, we had over 200 people, 300 people there, which was great.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just want to thank the staff for the White Linen Event that we had on the 9th of September, very well-attended. Glad all my colleagues showed up in their white. No one came in a different color. I was real surprised. You was going to do it? It's always one person is going to come in a different color, but everybody came in white, very well-attended. Glad everybody came out and had a good time. I did my prostate cancer walk at Cal State Dominguez Hills on the 16th. We had roughly about 100 walkers. I was more or less disappointed because we had some individuals that did not get notifications because last year was over 220 people that walked last year. But again, we're going to do it again. It'll be the fifth year, which is going to be the big year for the prostate cancer walk. Attended the Country Western, very well-attended. As the mayor stated, it rained a little bit, but no matter what, people still came out, and it was well-attended in District 3. And in addition to, I'm having a town hall meeting on the 21st, which is this coming Thursday, at 6:30 for Perry Mini Park, doing an actual... I have everything out there.
Oh, Jesus.
That their park, that community is very vocal. They need to be, they want to come out, get information. So I told them I will make sure we have a town hall meeting in their park, in their community. So they're happy they will be out. And then the last thing I had for the staff, for the city manager. I know we talked about the medians, trying to figure out, is there an RFP that's out based upon beautifications of the medians now to look at the plant material? Because my concern is we have the big yuccas and the different items that are out there, and they're overgrown. Trucks are hitting them. If you notice, if you go down the street, they've been cut off by traffic driving through. So all that needs to be cleaned up. So as they do the due diligence in cleaning up from the weeds, what plant, that we did plant, is overgrown and needs to be removed and replanted? Okay. So to staff, you guys had a question or answer to that question, or?
We do. Thank you, Councilmember Hicks. The two contractors we have on right now are doing cleanups, not just with weeds, but existing landscaping, so existing foliage. They are trimming those back in the problem areas. As you may have seen on the medians now, and as the mayor had mentioned, we are laying down some temporary mulch cover, as well as some basic planting. When the winter season finishes, we'll go back and replant so that those get cultivated properly. So this is sort of a stopgap until we get to the proper planting time of the year.
Thanks. And the last part is the streetlights. Many of the streetlights are out that I think we own as a city. So someone needs to go back out and look at them in the evening time. I know that I'm driving at night and half of them are not working. So most people, the staff is at home. But the residents are here. We are looking at darker streets than we need to. And now the time is changing. It gets darker sooner.
Absolutely. We are doing a streetlight audit right now.
And then lights at the park as well?
Yes, that's part of the capital improvement plan for all the parks.
For Dominguez, well, the biggest concern was Dominguez Park. When I went to Country Western, they were concerned about the ball lighting not working. You got football and soccer started now. So there's real big concern for them not having the lighting at the park.
Yes, yeah. In fact, we have a contract, I believe, with Musco for those. So those will be handled very soon.
Okay.
Before the first game. Yes, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, just again, want to compliment Councilmember Hicks on a great White Linen. All the festivities were great. Just want to thank KGLH and the Cal State Dominguez crew for hosting the Men's Health Summit. It's centered around mental health. And we were well-represented as far as our residents. Councilman had his walk, or went to his walk, and I went over to the Mental Health Summit that Cal State Dominguez hosted with KGLH. KGLH, Carson is the home of KGLH's largest listening population. So they would like to be a part of every community event that we have, every event. And they're just willing to be a part of the event because they have a large population that listens. So I wanted to just give them kudos and celebrate them. And Senator Steve Bradford, Dr. Cornel West was there. It was amazing. So just wanted to mention that to us. And I'm done.
Madam Mayor, for MPT, when you talked about the Men's Empowerment, they merged together. Because at the time, we started to do our 5K walk, half of the walkers had to stop walking because Stevie Wonder was coming in. So they had to stop. Everyone was looking as he was brought in for the actual summit because of the walk, so. Yes.
Yeah, thank you. I also attended the White Linen Day Event. It was quite a party and a good time for everyone there. And of course, I attended the Country Western Fair at Dominguez Park, another very successful event. I missed the walk in the morning because I was teaching school, Councilman Hicks, on that day. Otherwise, I would have been there. I had planned to, but I was a PE teacher on that day, on that. So I couldn't do both at the same time. But so just want to say goodnight to everyone. Thanks for staying to the end, a few of you. And have a good evening.
Thank you. Isn't it wonderful to leave here before 12 o'clock midnight? Wonderful. Staff, any comments, anything you'd like to add? Nothing? Don't be shy. Because I'm going home early and I, you know, I get shocked here. So thank you, everyone, to the staff. Thank you so much. See you tomorrow. See you tomorrow.